Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this February 14th, 2022, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. We will start our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening to everyone. Thanks for joining us, both in-house here and online on this Valentine's night. Thank you very much. Mr. Billard, could you please call the roll call of the council?
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Coulter. Councilmember Coulter. No, no audio. Councilmember Lohman.
Here.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
I'm here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Bussie.
Present.
Looks like Councilmember Coulter will attempt to reconnect and join us.
Yep, I think all seven members are present here. I think Councilmember Coulter had a technical issue. He's going to reconnect, and we'll make note of it when he does. I'd also like to welcome Mr. Mike Sable, our Assistant City Manager, who is sitting in for Mr. Verbrugge this evening. Welcome. Glad to have you here. We have, moving on to item four on our agenda, our Approval of the Agenda. We have a shorter agenda than we've had in recent nights, recent weeks. We've got two hearings tonight. Both should be relatively short, one for a New Precious Metal Dealer License and the other for a New Therapeutic Massage Enterprise License. And with that, that's the extent of our opportunities for public input this evening. We move into our organizational business, and we'll hear about, we'll hear an update on our Board and Commission Policy and Processes. We'll do a number of appointments for our advisory boards and commissions. Then we'll have a presentation and a study session, basically, on two items, the Multifamily Parking Standards Update and the Single and Two Family Home Standards and Accessory Dwelling Unit Updates. Council, any questions? Anything to add or reconfigure on the agenda? Councilmember Coulter, I see you back. Can we hear you now? Can we test your audio? We still have no audio from Councilmember Coulter. Is there anything on our end, or is it, do we know?
Mayor, I can contact our IT people and see if there's some sort of triage that they can do, and I'll report back.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. We will do that. So, after going through the agenda here, again, if there's no changes or additions to the agenda, I will move to tonight's agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second by Councilmember Carter to accept tonight's agenda, as stated. There is no further council discussion. Mr. Billard.
Carter.
Aye.
DeLisandro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Coulter. Mayor Bussie.
I will give an aye, give a thumbs up, Nathan, and we'll call it, we'll call it good for the approval of the agenda, and we'll call it a 7-0 vote to approve tonight's agenda. Thank you very much. We'll keep working on that, and with that, we'll move on to item four on our agenda, the Public Comment Period. And our Public Comment Period is a 20-minute period at each council meeting where we allow residents to come forward and address the council on issues not on tonight's agenda. We limit the comments to five minutes each to make sure it's even for everybody, and it's a, it's an opportunity to address the council, and it's not a back-and-forth, just an opportunity to, for us to listen and for, for you to talk. We do start item four with item 4.1, which is a response to prior meeting's comments, and I know we have at least one. Mr. Sable.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a response to questions from Mr. Thule last week at the February 7th meeting regarding the Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic planning process and perceived similarities between that process and other communities around the region and around the world. Yes, it is true that the city of Bloomington has recommended that Transformation Systems Limited be the strategic planning consultant and provider. The city manager, Jamie Verbrugge, has worked with that group before, and prior to the city, the work at the city of Brooklyn Park, had also done similar work for the Osseo School District. This was a process that was brought in and has been largely successful, not only in Minnesota, but around the world. Transformation Systems is really highly skilled and incredibly experienced, working in, with this strategic planning work, and so the definition of core values, agreement on mission statements, developing strategic objectives and timelines and strategies, is not a unique structure, and so it's very common for similar languages to emerge out of those strategic planning processes. What makes the Transformation Systems Limited process potentially slightly different than what most people are accustomed to is that it includes 30 people, which is generally larger than what most core planning teams or strategic planning processes have. But in addition, there's an agreement that each of the members of the core planning team agree to live out the words that are identified, and so there is no variation, so there has to be uniform agreement and consensus. And so while that process may take additional time, that is often why you see more agreement on higher-level items, and so some of the language may look similar, but that's because those are generally universally accepted values and that are identified. And so that is part of the reason why Transformation Systems Limited is identified, and why, if you look at those plans and the outcomes of those plans around Minnesota, around the country, and around the world, they may look similar, but it really does generate successful outcomes. I know from many communities that I've, as in my professional experience, I've seen them use them. The initiatives that they've put forward still carry forward to today and really do drive community change for the better. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sable, and I'll just add, as a member of that core planning team, and I'll let Councilmember Lohman chime in as well, and Councilmember, was it Martin or Councilmember Nelson? I can't remember. Councilmember Martin also was a member of the core planning team. When we went, when we started with those core values, we literally started with nothing. We started with a blank sheet, and those core values were what that group of 40 people came up with, word for word, and we literally went through them, word for word, and made changes based on individuals and, and group discussion, and ultimately, there had to be group consensus on that. We, if there was one person who disagreed, we went back to the drawing board and continued to work on it. So the fact that the core values, the value statements, were similar to anybody else, I honestly, I would agree, their core values for a number of folks, and, and I would give that. The similarities with the delimiters, I think, if I recall, and again, Dwayne or Patrick jump in, I think the delimiters, they were suggested ahead of time, or at least we were given direction on the delimiters, because honestly, if, if you pulled me aside and said, "Name what a delimeter is," I don't know that I could. And so I think it was a good starting point for the discussion that we, that we went through, and we ended up, I think, with, with some good and solid delimiters as we worked through the process as well. Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Lohman, want to chime in? Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, just real briefly, if we were going to plagiarize these delimiters, we all could have gone home about four and a half hours earlier from that planning activity, so it was word for word, as you said, we worked it out.
Councilmember Lohman?
You know, Mayor, I think you really characterized it well, and, you know, and I beg to differ. When you look at those words, some of those words are very different than what we had down. I was one of the main chief people who was kind of chucking away at those things, so if you got me to sit down, I would, I could tell you all the differences between those, those words that were not there, so, and I'm sure you guys would vouch for me, you know, and I think that, you know, it was, it was definitely a life-changing experience, and, you know, I'm not surprised that there are some similarities, but if you look carefully at the words, they are different, and I think they do reflect what Bloomington's all about.
Absolutely. Council, any additional questions on it, any additional comments? Very good. Mr. Sable, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, no.
Very good. With that, we will open tonight's Public Comment Period, and as I said, it's a 20-minute period, five minutes each, and we had a couple of people call ahead of time, and so we'll get to them first, and then we'll get to the folks here in the council chambers. I know that we had Sally Ness and Angela Coyle call ahead and asked to speak. Jerome, we're looking for speakers for item 4.2 tonight, specifically Ms. Sally Ness. Is Sally Ness on the line? Jerome, are you with us tonight?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, hello?
Very good.
Hello? Yes?
Hello, Mayor. Sally Ness now open.
Good evening, Ms. Ness, welcome.
Okay, can you hear?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I had written to Mayor and Council a request to revisit their vote to approve the conditional use permit at 1701 American Boulevard that included the questions I read last week. I received four replies. "February 2nd, I don't support revisiting this vote and will not ask that it be reconsidered. My comment: This reply does not provide answers to the questions." "February 2nd, I will consider the request, but at this time, I am not inclined to comment to requesting it be revisited. While we could continue to ask or rephrase questions ad nauseam or disagree with answers, I am not yet sure there is any factual change or new information. My comment: I do not see that the council asks questions and planning very few questions for a use that is stated to be more complex or unique considerations. That is a concern. The rephrasing of a question is needed to obtain a complete answer, and I do not consider that to be ad nauseam. The response about disagreeing with answers would require an answer, and not one council member provided an answer." "February 3rd, council wrote, 'I reviewed this item thoroughly when it was on the consent agenda in January, and am satisfied that the due diligence provided by the planning department and the commission at that time was sufficient and customary to grant the conditional use permit, especially since the permit requires bicycle parking. Location is served by several bus routes and is within walking distance of townhomes and apartment buildings where patrons may live. Therefore, I am not going to bring this item up for, again, for review. The information you provided in your email was already considered in the review process, and as such, I am satisfied with the council decision based on staff and commission recommendation. Certainly, as with any other conditional use permit issued by the city, we take confirmed violations of the permitted use seriously once the campus is up and running. I am sure that any potential issues will be addressed promptly if brought to the department's attention.'" "My comment: Council states they are satisfied that the due diligence provided was sufficient, and an example provided is that the permit requires bicycle parking. I do not agree requiring an educational facility to provide a bicycle rack to be due diligence that is needed. Council also states the location is within walking distance of townhomes and apartment buildings where patrons may live. That statement could be set of many uses and likely the reason a location was chosen. That does not mean the demographics of an area at the time of approval will not change. Additionally, conditional use permits go with the land, and the next occupant might not have any patrons in the immediate area. The point: It is not relevant. Council states your email is already considered. That is questionable since the questions asked were not answered. Council concludes we take confirmed violations of the permit seriously? This is questionable, especially noticing 8201 Park Avenue having an event for more than 500 in the large gym and a council member inviting others to the event." "February 6th reply from council: I do not have issues with it and remain comfortable with my vote in favor. My comment: A council member should not be comfortable with not obtaining all information for a use that is stated to be more complex or unique considerations. Additionally, council stated in an email, it's my understanding we already had a public hearing, confusing it with the hearing to change the city code allowing previous unapproved uses in FD-2. My comment: This council member did not reply that they understood the difference and a reason why the specific use should not have had a, you should not have had a public hearing. Council and others should have heard testimony from both owners and the public. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Jerome, is Angela Coyle on the line?
Yes, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Angela Coyle is on the line. Would you like me to open up her line now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Angela Coyle, your line is open.
Thank you. Angela Coyle, happy Valentine's Day, you guys.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. When my kids were little, we used to play a game where we changed one letter in a word to make it a different word. Timmy would become tummy, Nathan would become nothing, and so forth, and the kids would laugh and laugh. We had a great time. But there are other words where you switch a letter or two, and the outcome isn't so funny. Take equality. Take out the A and take out the L, and you get equity. Now, many people might think equality and equity are just different versions of the same thing, but nothing could be further from the truth. These are complete opposites and have nothing to do with each other. Equality treats everyone the same and gives them all the same opportunities. Equity tries to give certain groups advantages over others, as if they're too stupid or too incompetent to compete or do well in life on their own. So you position yourself as the figure who has to come in and swoop and help everyone based on the color of their skin, as long as they'll vote for you in the next election, right? Well, Mr. Mayor, our city hall is obsessed with equity and not equality. Notice I said "city hall," not the city in general, because the rest of the city of Bloomington could honestly care less about equa, or equity, excuse me. They only care about equality, because that's how it is in the real world. Now, I know equity is the new buzzword, and you've used it so much by now, but it's practically meaningless. It cheapens the times where people really do need some sort of affirmative action. Does it make sense that our city to build its entire existence around this one thing? No, it doesn't. First of all, Mr. Mayor, this whole equity thing is getting expensive. We spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in payroll to staff these racial equity positions. And just last week, our city manager raided the Strategic Priorities Slush Fund for yet another $100,000 of racial equity payroll. When is it going to end? Secondly, it's virtual signaling on steroids, because it's all pretty meaningless in the first place. Our BIPOC youth are struggling in failing schools, crime is up exponentially, and you keep pulling on regressive taxes, which is so hypocritical. So what difference has all of your racial equity nonsense done anyways? Not much. So all of this must be because our city is extremely racist, and there's deep racial divisions here that need fixing, right? No. In fact, last year's 2021 residential survey showed over three-fourths of residents thought Bloomington is a place that would be welcoming to all people. A full 79% felt that way. On the other hand, trust in your governing style and the overall direction of the city has dropped 3%, falling from 70% in 2022 to 67% in 2021. It's kind of hard to pull the wool over people's eyes when they start paying attention to what you're actually doing. I believe Dr. Martin Luther King would be absolutely appalled at what is going on in Bloomington today. During Black History Month of all time, we should be celebrating his most important teaching, and that someday, people would be judged not by the color of their skin, but the content of their character. Treat people equally, and they will rise to the occasion. Bloomington is not a racist city, but as long as you keep making the color of someone's skin the most important thing about them, we put off the time when we can fulfill Dr. Martin Luther King's dream. So let's get rid of this equity crap and start treating people equally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Anybody here in the council chambers wish to speak to address the council on an issue not on tonight's agenda?
I'll go. Can I get the overhead, please?
Can we get the overhead, please?
Andy Thule, 50-year resident of Bloomington here. I saw a follow-up on the strategic plan which I was on, and I didn't get, I ran out of time last time, but I just wanted to have some questions for the city manager, managers. And how long in years and months has city manager worked with Teresa Arpyn with Transformation Systems? We know from Brooklyn Park, but how much total compensation dollars would be paid to city staff, including overtime, to work on the strategic plan? How much are we paying Transformation Systems in the total compensation? And what is the ratio of city staff to residents on each of the planning teams? And how many staff are being added to fulfill the strategic goals into 2030? So I kind of want to know how many staff we're going to put on there. One thing, one question I had, too, is, is the city manager getting paid by Granicus? He was speaking through Granicus, which is our agenda management system that we actually utilize in the city, and he was speaking to other city leaders across the country through Granicus using a city-provided PowerPoint. So I want to know if the city manager is actually getting paid by Granicus, or if this was a volunteer opportunity. Another thing I want to address is, while I was on the core planning team, my workplace has gotten rid of the word "chief" in their, in their job description. So I actually brought a, brought a question forward to the city manager in an email that'll show up here, and the email says, "I noticed you have, you have the word 'chief' in many different positions. Working in education around other cultures, the word 'chief' can be offensive to our Native American population. The institution I work with has removed this from all job titles." And I said, "I'm sure you're working on this within the city. I look forward to your response on this." And so I didn't get a response, so I followed up to the council secretary, and I said, "Are you getting my emails? I'm asking for a response on this." It says, "Yes, your email was received yesterday, and we'll get back to you soon." So this is February, or January 25th, so here we are, Valentine's evening. I'd rather be home with my sweetheart than here at council chambers, but here we are, February 14th. No response from city manager number one or number two. So if the city manager is going to be gone this much, much, I hope he shares this communication with you, because we're not getting responses, you know, from you, so. But the word "chief," my institution's removed it, so I hope the council will look at changing some job descriptions and titles on that behalf. So a little upset that we didn't get communication. That's not the seventh pillar of transparency and engagement. Right here is another example. I wrote a letter to all the city council regarding the strategic plan here, and I'm worried about the strategic plan just in general. It wasn't televised, so I really don't know what happened in the core planning team. So I felt that it should be, you know, televised, so I want to know in public comment, in the next public comment, why the strategic plan was not televised to its entirety. So I think the public would like to look at it. It's a big thing that's going to be rolling out across the city. This email went out to every single council member. Some okay responses, but I have three here that didn't get back to me. Mayor Bussie didn't get back to me. Dwayne Lohman, at home, didn't get back to me. And my own council member, Patrick Martin, which is notorious for not getting back to me. So very disheartening that council members are, are not, not getting back to their constituents or their residents, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thule. Anyone else in the council chambers? Mr. Leva.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, acting city manager, staff. My name's Rico Leva. I'm here today to say that if you truly value racial equity and inclusion, and you are serious about bringing people together instead of creating more division in our city, you need to revisit your approach, policies, and messaging related to racial equity. And before I go on, let me, let me remind you of your Council Rules of Procedure, Section 18, which states, "Council members must be respectful of diverse opinions," and goes on to say, "The mayor and council members have a public stage to show how individuals with disparate points of view can find some, can find common ground and seek a compromise that benefits the community as a whole." On January 20, on January 10th, "I, a BIPOC Bloomington resident, I'm mixed race, black, white, and Hispanic, address the council with concerns I had with your equal opportunity statements and some of your job postings, and I, and how it and some of your policies can negatively affect BIPOC community members. Giving the city the benefit of the doubt, I stated that I believe these policies are often well-intentioned but misguided. My comments motivated the city manager and staff to revisit and actually make changes to the equal opportunity statement. The changes weren't 100% what I wanted, but I feel they were a step in the right direction. So imagine my surprise then when Mayor Bussie spent three and a half minutes publicly excoriating me over my comments." At the January 24th meeting, he recalls part of my statement where I say, "You have now created a situation where if a black man, a white woman, and a white man all apply for this job, and the black man is hired, people will look back and question whether or not it was because of his race or because he was the most qualified." The mayor says, "I believe, folks, this type of language is just totally unacceptable." Basically, what Mr. Leva implied here very strongly is that Bloomington ignores the qualifications of applicants. Mr. Leva implies very directly that the city of Bloomington hires only based on race. He ends his comment suggesting, "I apply, I apologize to the employees of Bloomington." First of all, does this sound to you like the mayor is being respectful of diverse opinions? When I suggest your policies are well-intentioned but misguided, and the mayor's response is that my comments are totally unacceptable and I should apologize, does that sound like the mayor is being a role model to show how individuals with disparate points of view can find common ground and seek compromise? But why would I make those comments? That's the big question. Let's take the new police chief as an example. On Thursday, February 10th, the Star Tribune posted an article where the headline reads, "Booker Hodges Named Bloomington's New Police Chief. He Will Be the Department's First Black Chief." But he said that matters less than his record of service. And he's right. Why does his race matter? Why would that be the first thing they point out is his race? I have no doubt Dr. Hodges will make a great police chief, but why would anyone think race played a role in his hiring? The answer is your policies. For example, goal number two on the city's racial equity business plan webpage is to increase diversity in city leadership positions. Another example is your park system master plan. Starting on page 161, it talks about what dollars are allocated to which parks, and going through the formulas, you'll see that on page 163, minority population is 30% of the neighborhood characteristic weighting, and on page 164, you see that neighborhood characteristics are 25% of the overall weighting. So in other words, all else being equal, race plays 7.5% of a role in the equity priority index for parks. So if race has that effect on our funding, why wouldn't it also have that effect on our hiring? In this particular case, the other police chief candidate was a white male, but your stated goals are to increase diversity in leadership positions, and your previous equal employment opportunity statement said you were actively seeking to diversify your workforce, and you've codified that all things being equal, you value non-white residents over white residents. Your policy has created this situation where now, people may ask, if Dr. Hodges would white, was white, would he still have been hired, or would you have waited until a similarly qualified non-white candidate come forward? This is all you, and before you call on me to apologize to our new chief, just know that I won't, but I'd be happy to have a conversation with him if you'd care to pass along my phone number. I'll end with this, because I've got 30 seconds. In his statements on January 24th, Mr. Verbrugge said, "The history of systemic racism, institutionalized racism, is that communities that have not often had opportunities because of that experience are reluctant to put themselves forward because of that history. I am standing here before you, a BIPOC member of this community, questioning your policies that you say are here for the benefit of people like me. What effect do you think it has on other BIPOC community members who may want to put themselves forward when response to dissent is so harsh? And it's not just the mayor. Your racial equity business plan also tries to silence the discussion as well." I'm out of time. In the next couple of weeks, I'll come back and I'll give you some of my ideas for how we can change this and make it better.
Thank you, Mr. Leva. And if I recall, Mr. Leva, you called. You called me. We had a nice discussion.
We did.
You asked me to apologize, and I did apologize for the way I addressed that.
I hope this was-
If you recall, if you recall, I also- If you recall, if you recall, I also said that I would continue to call you out
Yes.
for your attempts to delegitimize or to dismiss the good work that Bloomington is doing to be a welcoming community to all, and I will continue to do that.
Yep. And I hope this was better. I hope that what I said here was more clear than the way I stated it on January 10th. It maybe was, maybe wasn't. I'd be happy to have a future conversation with you. Like I said, I'll come back and explain how I think we can make this better and work to actually make our racial equity work for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Leva. Anyone else in the chambers wish to speak to items not on tonight's agenda? Nope, not here. Okay, for that. Jerome, anyone else online? We're just about at the end of our public comment period. Anyone else online wishing to speak to item 4.2?
Only Angela calls on the line. I will open up her line.
So there are no callers on the line?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening.
I didn't real, I, I'm done talking. I was just listening on the phone. I didn't intend to speak anymore. Sorry.
Good enough. Thank you. With nobody coming forward, nobody on the line, council, I'm going to close tonight's public comment period, and we're going to move on to item five, our introductory items. And a couple of items on our, tonight's introductory items. The first is the introduction of new employees. We've been doing this over the course of the past few months, trying to introduce the employees who are new to the city, primarily to introduce them to the council, but also to the residents who will likely be interacting with these new employees. We've got five new employees to introduce tonight. The first is a group from our community development department, and Carla Henderson is going to introduce them, and we're going to say hi to them. Good evening, Ms. Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So we have three employees that I am ecstatic to introduce. The first is David Spath. He is a new plumbing inspector. He started on January 3rd. Prior to coming to the city of Bloomington, he worked for Hardy Mechanical for 10 years as a commercial plumbing inspector, as well as a foreman, and has vast experience with large commercial projects and will be primarily inspecting all plumbing projects in the South Loop. So I want to welcome him. He started on January 3rd, if I didn't say that.
Good evening, Mr. Spath. Are you with us?
I believe I am.
Yes, you are. Good evening. Welcome.
Great. Thank you. Thank, well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for this welcome. And as Carla stated, she kind of gave me my history, and I look forward to serving the community of Bloomington hopefully for many years, and have thoroughly enjoyed my employment so far with the city of Bloomington.
Well, we're glad to have you on board. Look forward to meeting you in person. Thanks much for being here tonight.
Thanks so much, Mayor.
Thank you, David. The second employee we have is Sean Enright. Sean comes to us from the city of St. Paul, where he's a plan examiner. He also spent time in the city of Minneapolis as a housing inspector in code enforcement. And then when he was living in Colorado, he was conducting energy audits for residential homes. So we are very excited to have him on the team, and he just started on January 18th, and he is a residential plan examiner. So Sean, do you, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Sean. Thanks for, glad to be introduced here. Thank you, Carla. Yeah, I've been in public service for about six years now, and excited for the opportunity here in Bloomington. Got a nice diverse population here, and so far I've seen a lot of stuff starting to come through, and excited to be on the team.
And we're excited to have you, especially in the realm of our energy inspections. We're diving into that with both, jumping into that with both feet, and so glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks much.
So David and Sean are part of our building and inspections team, and now, last but certainly not least, I get to introduce Sheila Storzinger, whose first day is today, actually. She is joining us as a commercial appraiser, and she does not have to travel far. She is joining us from the city of Edina, where she worked for the last 11 years, and prior to Edina, she worked for the city of Brooklyn Park, and she's also done private fee appraisal work. And so she has a total of 19 years of commercial appraiser experience. I was joking today at staff meeting, saying that she was like the NBA draft, like we were working hard to get her on our team, and we are ecstatic to have her. So Sheila?
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for welcoming me to the city of Bloomington. I'm very excited to be a part of your group and looking forward to many years working for the city.
Well, good evening. Thanks for joining us. You win the prize for the newest employee. And there's nobody else even close, so well done. Well done. Thanks much. Again, look, I'm forward to, to meeting you in person and, and very happy to have you on board. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Our second group of employees is a, a pair of employees from our IT department, and Amy Chaney, who heads up our IT department, is going to do the preliminary introductions. She's going to join us here in just a moment.
Yes.
There she is. Good, the, the screen bounced around. I lost track of you. Well, good evening, Ms. Chaney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm very pleased to introduce two new employees for the IT department. First, we have Mai Fan. Mai started with us in April of 2021, and she is our office support specialist. She's responsible for many things, but of those, her purchasing activities kind of rise to the top, where she does anything from contract management to purchasing our office supplies and updating our software maintenance agreements. She also maintains a software catalog that includes over 200 software applications used by all the departments throughout the city. Mai is also part of our IT's racial equity action team. Most recent, recently, she worked for the Geek Squad, and, and she is currently pursuing her master's degree in computer science. Mai, would you like to say a few words?
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and everyone in the city council. I'm very happy to be here today, and I've been with the city since April last year, and it's been an honor for me to work in IT department, to be able to learn so much from everyone. And I really look forward to work many years after my graduation with the city. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mai. Thank you for being with us, and, and welcome to the city of Bloomington. Very glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Thanks much.
And next, we have Thomas Ward. Tom started on January 11th, and he is an applications administrator. He assists with providing IT solutions and support for our city departments. And Tom most recently worked for a small software company, Axonom, where he was part of a team that delivered visual 2D, 2D, 3D, and virtual and augmented reality CPQ, or configure price quote systems, to a variety of industries. He was responsible for customer support, internal IT support, systems and database administration, and hardware installation and maintenance. Tom is also a lifelong resident of Bloomington, and Tom, would you like to say a few words?
Tom, I think you might be on mute.
Might be suffering from Nathan Coulter effect tonight. All right. Well, we welcome Tom, and we're very happy to have him as part of our team.
Welcome aboard, Tom. Glad, glad to have you on board. So hold up one finger, Jefferson or Kennedy? One finger if you're Jefferson, two finger if you're Kennedy. If you're Jefferson, okay, very good. Okay. Good, good. Good, good. Well, welcome to the, to the city of Bloomington, to you, and to Mai, and to Sheila, and to Sean, and to David. Glad to have all of you on board. You're part of, I think, is one of the best city stats in, in all of Minnesota, so thank you very much for being part of it. Thanks for joining us on your Valentine's evening. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Amy. Onto item 5.2 on our agenda. And item 5.2 is the work plan, the 2022 work plan for our sustainability commission. Our city charter requires all of our commissions and boards to bring forward work plans for the year and annual reports, and this is, we're starting to work our way through those. We've heard from a couple of them previously. And now to our sustainability commission. Emma Struss, who's our sustainability coordinator, is here this evening. Welcome, Emma, and good evening. Welcome. Thanks.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm also joined by Deputy Director, or the Alice, if there are questions for her as well. And I will make a note that Chair Andrew was hoping to be with us tonight, but due to a family emergency, unfortunately, he's not able to join us. So for tonight's agenda, we're here to discuss the 2022 work plan, but before we dive into that, we'll share some highlights from last year's work, and then we'll provide a summary of what the commission is aiming to do in 2022, and then have time for questions. As a reminder, the sustainability commission has been focused on the following areas of sustainability: ecological land stewardship, climate change mitigation with energy and transportation, solid waste, environmental justice, multiple areas of sustainability, the catch-all when there's more than two of these initiatives together, water conservation, and surface water quality. So with that, I'll share some of the highlights of last year's efforts. The commission spent a lot of time on ecological land stewardship. They did things like a buckthorn bust event. They collaborated with the League of Women Voters for the Earth Day celebration focused on Bloomington's natural resources. They had a garlic mustard poll. They had two community tree planting events, and they also helped review the natural resource and sustainability sections of the park system master plan. For climate change and energy, the two big initiatives were passing time-of-sale energy disclosure and large building benchmarking. For solid waste, it was developing the bulky item management program and preparing for curbside organics recycling, starting next month. For environmental justice, our, one of our youth sustainability commissioners, Yang Yan Zhang, worked with staff to hold community listening sessions around transportation and energy in the summer. And then also, we started using the racial equity impact assessments for policy work like time-of-sale energy disclosure. For water conservation, we completed 14 irrigation audits in townhomes and condos, and it's estimated if the recommendations are completed, that we'll be saving 2.9 million gallons of water. So that was a little bit of last year's work plan. Now we'll dive into the work plan and what the commission's aiming to do in 2022. I won't dive into all the initiatives, because there are more initiatives than there are letters in the alphabet, but here is a screenshot of the executive summary, and in the meeting packet is the complete plan. But for each of the focus areas that they prioritize, I'll highlight initiative or two from each section. I will note that the priorities for the commission were ecological land stewardship, climate change mitigation with energy and transportation, environmental justice, and solid waste for this year. So for ecological land stewardship, one of the priorities is assisting staff in adopting criteria and processes for making decisions about the use of resources and selecting natural resource projects for city-owned parkland. For climate change and energy, it's launching large building benchmarking and time-of-sale energy disclosure, and also looking for opportunities to increase capacity to provide more community engagement and support for residential energy efficiency programs. Then for transportation, we have set quantitative transportation goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. For solid waste, it's launching the bulky item management program and launching curbside organics recycling. And for environmental justice, one of the big initiatives is combining demographic information with environmental data, using GIS to create at least, at least three maps, so that we're better able to understand who's impacted by environmental hazards, and perhaps if there are disproportionate effects, how we can be addressing those. And then in the multiple areas of sustainability category, we have developed a sustainable building and site design ordinance. We've started doing research in past years, and Hennetton County has provided the city support and facilitation for developing a proposal in 2022. And then in addition to the planned initiatives, the commission also has made sure that they've carved out time to support requests and questions from the community and to be a resource for other commissions and boards and task force. And before I end, I want to pause and just have a big thank you to three of our retiring commissioners that will be meeting the end of their two, two terms on the commission at the end of February. So we have Commissioner Rob Bute, Paul Erdman, and Steve Flag. And thank you so much for all the hours that they've devoted and helped the city moving forward on sustainability initiatives. So with that, I'll pause and see if there are any questions, and then up on the screen is the proposed motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Struss. And before we get to questions, council, I will also extend my thank you to the retiring members of the, the sustainability commission. That's a, that's a lot of knowledge and experience and institutional brainpower walking out the door, and that's, it's, it's going to be a challenge to replace those folks, because I know they've done outstanding work over their time on the sustainability commission. I think all were inaugural members of the sustainability commission, were they not? Yes, I think so. They've been on since the get-go, so please, the next time you see them, pass our thanks on to them. I'll certainly follow up with emails also to thank them for the outstanding work that they have done. Council, any questions of Ms. Struss regarding the sustainability commission year-end review and work plan? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, thank you so much. This is really exciting, and I really appreciate all of the work that you and all of the commissioners have put into this. So I have a quick question around the transportation goal and the goal to set some benchmarks and goals for this year, and I'm curious if you did discuss any other kind of low-hanging fruit that we could consider in 2022? You know, I know Councilmember De La Sondro has talked about this before, and, and carbon emissions from transportation are one of the most significant, and so I guess I'm just curious, like, as a council, we've brainstormed a little bit around our fleet, and could we start cycling in hybrid vehicles? So curious what those conversations have been like.
Thank you. So Councilmember Carter, the, I think it's important to note that this is the sustainability commission's work plan. There are initiatives that are happening outside of the commission's work plan that staff are working on. So I know that, speaking about the fleet, just this morning, I had a call with the fleet manager, looking for opportunities, looking into EVs and discussing next steps, what that might look like. So there's definitely things that are happening outside of this work plan as there's staff availability. I think the priority for putting, setting goals is that unlike energy, I think, as I've mentioned before, transportation is such a large source of greenhouse gas emissions, and we don't have a plan, like we have the energy action plan, and we don't have goals that we're able to measure and make sure that we're moving as quickly as we need to, to avoid the worst of climate change. So that was really kind of step one of make sure that we have a clear consensus of where we need to go, so that we can have less one-off projects and more of a cohesive plan to, to move forward.
That's really helpful, and a very good reminder that this work does not just live within the sustainability commission, that it's work happening broadly. The other thing I just wanted to mention, so, you know, obviously, there has been some conversation so far in this council meeting even, around equity versus equality, and, you know, I think, like, I, when I was looking through your work plan, I really appreciated that you had specifically mentioned translating materials for people in our community, and I think if we would take an equality approach, we would just share the same materials with everyone, assuming everybody needed the same thing. But if we're taking an equity approach, which we need to do, we make sure that we translate materials, so that for those who speak Spanish in our community, they also are getting the same information around organics recycling, or whatever, you know, the energy assistance program, whatever it might be. So I just wanted to applaud you for that, and I want to thank you for, for applying that equity lens to the trans, or to the sustainability commission's work plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Well put. Councilmember Coulter, I hope we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Welcome. Glad you're here.
That's really good news. Well, thank you, and, and actually, I kind of wish I had talked to Councilmember Carter before this, because she pretty much made the exact same point that I was just about to make, and, and that is around our, our goals around transportation. And, you know, I think one of the things that sort of we need to, really, I, I think when it comes to transportation, like you said, this is, it's such a big piece of the puzzle, and involves so many different people that it, I mean, it, it seems to me, and I was going to, sort of, the initial thought was sort of some, some sort of joint project between some sort of joint project between the Sustainability Commission and the Planning Commission, uh, but I think, I mean, I think it even goes beyond that. And I think really, something sort of to, to consider is, is almost, you know, the way we, staff has developed a racial equity impact statement, um, that we, we develop some sort of climate change impact statement, that really goes through sort of the whole process, with every development project, every, um, uh, street improvement, every, you know, take your pick, every, sort of, everything that the city does, that we are kind of taking that lens to, to the work that is done. Um, but I, I think there, there are things, in particular with planning, that, that can be done, and, um, we'll actually be talking about some of them, uh, as soon as, as later tonight, but, um, I just, I think we, we need, we do need that sort of broader-based approach, um, that I, I think brings sort of more, more focus to really what are the goals, and, um, you know, I think to the, the point that, that has been made before, um, you know, we, it, it is good, I think, to have those quantitative, uh, those quantitative goals, but at the end of the day, you know, we, we know we're going to need to reduce greenhouse gas, gas emissions that come from, from vehicles, and so, you know, I, I think in some sense, um, you know, we can, we can and should get on that work, you know, as soon as possible, and really move that forward, and, and goals are important, so that we can sort of benchmark, but, um, you know, at, at the end of the day, it's, it's work that needs to be done, and of course, you already know that, um, but I, I think there are just, um, there are just a few different approaches that we might want to think about in terms of how we, how we bring that work forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember De La Sondro.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Great to see you, Ms. Strauss. Appreciate you being here tonight. Um, I, a couple of comments really quickly. I am really excited about the direct community engagement you're thinking about as it relates to the residential energy program. I think, uh, I think as Councilmember Nelson and I have said before, getting people to audit their house is a, is a great thing, but getting people to actually do the work that will improve their house is gonna move the needle for us, right? So excited to see what you're gonna plan for that. Um, I was gonna say the exact same thing on transportation, as, as Councilmember Carter and Coulter mentioned, so I'll, I'll skip that, but, uh, thank you for, for, uh, helping out when you can, and being opportunistic about potentially seeing new things on the horizon, uh, as other members of the staff bring stuff to you on that regard. Um, the, the one question I had for you was related to where you were around ecological land stewardship, or else, you know, as we maybe think about that as natural resources. In the Parks Master Plan, there's this notion of creating an actual natural resources office, if you will, or officer, and I'm wondering if there's an attempt, and I, you know, whether you and, and talking with Ms. Ketchry or anything, is there a concerted effort there on, on this idea of making decisions about the use of resources and balance, and selecting the projects, to, to focus on that as it relates to the goal from the Parks Master Plan as well?
Yes. So for that, to answer that question, I might pull in, Ellen, are you on the line?
I am, I am. Um, Mayor, Councilmember De La Sondro, um, we actually are taking steps to put a greater emphasis on that natural resources restoration function, and have actually started aligning public works staff to kind of prepare for that. So we actually have created a position for somebody who will focus specifically on natural resources and preservation in those areas, and then will have kind of a different role to be focused more on facilities and those kinds of things. And that's kind of a direct function of the Parks Master Plan that was put together. So those steps are already being taken within the Public Works Department and our Maintenance Department to put greater emphasis on natural resources. Um, and the, the Parks Department has been really focusing on trying to priority, prioritize key areas where the city should be investing resources, and I think they see that in two phases. Um, one phase that will take place this year will be kind of really high priority areas that we want to get to work on right away, and then I think they also envision a longer, um, uh, natural resources management plan that would cover a greater period of time. So based on what came out of that Parks, uh, planning process last year, we are now taking steps to kind of make some of those changes internally.
Great, thank you. I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lohman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to just, uh, just say a couple of things. Uh, first of all, I wanted to thank the staff. This has kind of been the second year we've kind of gone through this process, and, uh, this may be the first time, uh, we're not done with it yet. We haven't seen Councilmember Coulter say, wait a minute, why is everything a priority one on all of our stuff here? We've still got a little time yet, but I, I want to thank staff for their hard work on, on this. This has been a lot of hard work, and the things that they've done over the past years. I know we cut out some things that we, that we, we did. One thing I wanted to mention was our, our get-together that we had. I thought that was great to have everybody to get together out in the, uh, out in the open, and get a chance to meet various folks who've had the opportunity, uh, over the years to contribute to the sustainability piece. And I wanted to just, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I know that, you know, before I got on board, uh, on the council, this was a, a big priority for you, and I want to, want to thank you for, uh, your, your leadership and stewardship, um, at that particular point in time, uh, also helping us to get to where we are today. I know, uh, that Chair Sandry is, uh, going through some personal stuff, uh, right now, and I hope that you'll all, uh, get a chance to, to reach out to him, and, uh, and just, uh, hold him up and his family, uh, with what's going on there. Um, and then the, the last real question that I have for staff, for those folks who are in the public, uh, and also for those who are on the council who want to be involved, uh, with work groups, how do we go about, about doing that? We know that, you know, many hands make of light work. Um, how do, how do we go about getting involved with this? This is a whole community thing that we all need to be, uh, working on together.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, so if it's a resident who's interested, and what can I do to help, I would recommend going to the Sustainable Bloomington webpage, where we have initiatives, uh, lined up on solid waste, energy, different ways that people can be involved. We also post volunteer events when those are available on that website. As far as council member involvement, that would be emailing me if there's, you know, a topic that you're interested in. As we are convening the working groups, um, after our newly appointed three Sustainability Commissioners are appointed tonight, uh, we'll have future conversations on who's on what working group, and those will be opportunities for our council members to be involved in those as well. So I, uh, feel free to email me if there's a topic that you want to be involved, and we can go from there.
We really do need you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and yes, I would echo that. There's, there's a lot of work to do, and I know there's a lot of folks who would be interested in doing that work, so, uh, if you're out there watching, please don't be shy. Uh, jump right up, and, um, I'm sure Emma can find, can find something for you to do. I know, no doubt in my mind, she can put you to work, so. Council, any additional questions? Not seeing any hands go up. Council, I would, uh, look for a motion to adopt the Sustainability Commission 2022 Work Plan.
Happy to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember De La Sondro.
I'm, uh, move to approve the 2022 Sustainability Commission Work Plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember De La Sondro, a second by Councilmember Carter, to accept the Sustainability Commission's 2022 Work Plan. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
De La Sondro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Uh, Emma, Ellen, thank you for your work on this. I know it is a big lift, and it's so very important for the City of Bloomington, and I really appreciate all the time and effort that you have put into this, and, and the Commission members have put into this, and the members of public that have been involved in this have put into this. Uh, it's, it's very important work, and so, thank you very much, and look forward to the work that's gonna be going on in 2022. Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council.
Moving on, item six on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. Councilmember De La Sondro has our consent business for this evening. Councilmember De La Sondro.
I do, so forgive me in advance, Mr. Mayor, if I don't do this right, because it's my first time doing consent agenda, but I did not hear from anyone. So unless there is someone here tonight that is interested in holding one of these items, I can proceed. Not hearing anyone, I will move tonight's consent business, items 6.1 through 6.5 of tonight's agenda.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Councilmember De La Sondro, a second by Councilmember Martin, to accept tonight's consent business. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
De La Sondro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson. Unmuted.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Nail it, Councilmember, well done. Well done. Now you're no longer a rookie, you're right into it. Item seven on our consent, on our agenda this evening are our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, and as I mentioned earlier, we have two public hearings this evening. Both are, uh, new licenses for the City of Bloomington. Uh, first one is item 7.1, it's a public hearing on a new precious metal dealer license, American Rare Coin and Collectibles. Mr. Doug Junker, who is our license examiner and, uh, our Assistant City Clerk, is gonna lead us through this. Mr. Junker, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm having some problems with my video, so hopefully you can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you, just can't see you.
Okay, good. So yeah, American Rare Coin, one of our original precious metal dealers, uh, so nothing new as far as the establishment, but going through a sale, so a new ownership, a couple gentlemen that have had precious metal experience here in the Twin Cities before, and everything's checked out, so just looking for your approval.
Council, any questions of Mr. Junker on this? No questions of Mr. Junker? With that, I will open the public hearing on item 7.1. This is a public hearing for a license for a new precious metal dealer, American Rare Coin and Collectibles. Anyone in the chambers wishing to come forward to speak to item 7.1 in the public hearing? No one coming forward? Jerome, do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 7.1?
No one, I have seen for, uh, to speak for agenda 7.1.
Thank you. Last caller here in the chambers, seeing no one coming forward? Council, no one coming forward, and no one on the phone to speak to item 7.1, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. So, Martin.
Uh, second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember De La Sondro, to close the public hearing on item 7.1. Here, no further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
De La Sondro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Council, unless there's any questions or clarifications on this, looks is, uh, pretty straightforward.
Would, would you be willing to grant me a quick question?
Please, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm just kind of curious why we license precious metal dealers. Uh, I'm assuming it's in our ordinances, and I was just kind of curious what the background for that was.
Very good. Mr. Junker, why do, why do, why does the city license precious metal dealers in the City of Bloomington?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember De La Sondro, a quick history. Um, so Minnesota started, uh, regulating pawn shops in the eighties. Um, obviously, the idea here is that I can bring in my item and, and get some cash to get me by, but it opened up a door to also thieves to taking their stolen merchandise. So fast forward a couple decades, and some new business plans come along with, uh, second-hand sporting goods and kids' toys, and, and also the gold spike in the mid-two thousands here led to some of that same activity, where people were grabbing things that weren't theirs and finding a way to get, get some cash. So Bloomington implemented a code and had precious metal dealer and second-hand good shops report to the same system that pawn shops do, and it's worked quite well for us, and since then, a few other cities have copied us, and we're always proud of that. Um, and, uh, so, uh, yeah, so precious metal dealer, we keep them separate, because precious metal dealers deal in gold and silver on the, the current, uh, commodity exchange, so we have to treat them slightly different than your, your skis and ice skates and things like that, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Junker. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Mr. Junker. I have said countless times, you know you've got something good going when other cities copy you, and that's exactly what's happening here, and, and cities are notorious for it. Council, any additional questions? Seeing none, council, I would look for action on item 7.1.
Mayor, I can move this.
Councilmember Martin.
Uh, Mayor, I motion approval of the precious metal dealer license for Liberty Acquisition LLC, doing business as American Rare Coin and Collectibles.
Second, Coulter.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Coulter, to approve the precious metal dealer license for Liberty Acquisition LLC. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
De La Sondro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item 7.2 on our agenda is our second public hearing, also for a license, this for a new therapeutic massage enterprise license for modern athlete massage. Mr. Junker.
Mr. Mayor and Council, maybe one of those other things we're proud of some time, but this is a massage therapist from a nearby city that's coming over to our city, um, to find some new space and, and get licensed with us. Um, again, as I think you've seen this before, this was in our, our, uh, our Penn Avenue location, where we've had a few other massage, uh, enterprises come into. Um, so everything's looking great, uh, and, uh, background's looking good. I think we're just waiting on the final inspection of the space, but looking for your approval tonight to move forward.
Thank you. Council, any questions regarding item 7.2? Questions of Mr. Junker? Clarifications? Origin questions? Very good. With no questions, I will open this public hearing. This is a public hearing, uh, for a new therapeutic massage enterprise license for modern athlete massage at, uh, 8120 Penn Avenue South, Suite 500N. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak to item 7.2? Seeing no one coming forward? Jerome, is there anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 7.2?
No one, I have seen for agenda, uh, 7.2. You may continue, Mayor.
Thank you, Jerome. Last call for anyone in the chambers? No one coming forward, council, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 7.2.
So moved, Coulter.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, and a second by Councilmember Martin, to close the public hearing on item 7.2. No further council discussion. Mr. Brillert. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
De La Sondro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing. Council, any questions on this? Any clarification, anything we need from Mr. Junker? If not, I would look for action.
Mayor, I can make that motion.
Councilmember Coulter.
Mayor, I will move the approval of the therapeutic massage enterprise license for Modern Athletic Massage LLC, doing business as Modern Athletic Massage, 8120 Penn Avenue South, Suite 500N, Bloomington, Minnesota, 55431.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember De La Sondro, to approve the therapeutic massage enterprise license for Modern Athlete Massage LLC. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillert. Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
De La Sondro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you much, Mr. Junker, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jerome, that is the last that we need for public input, the last of the hearings that we have this evening. So you can, you can sign off for the rest of the evening. Thank you very much for your help tonight.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good night.
Have a good evening. We'll move into item eight on our business agenda, and it's our organizational business. And I think, as I mentioned earlier, we do have, we've got a couple of update information items sandwiched by appointments to our commission. And the first update item we have is item 8.1. It's a Board and Commission Policy and Process Improvement Update. We've been working on this for a while. We actually asked staff to take a look at ways to improve the ways that we appoint people to our boards and commissions to try and make it more, more thorough, I think, a little bit more consistent, a little bit more meaty, so we make sure that folks who are applying to our boards and commissions get an opportunity to, to fully come forward and be heard, but also that we're picking the best people and with the best knowledge that we do have. And they've offered, staff has offered a number of different changes, and this will be our first opportunity to put that to work. And I'm going to turn it over now to Emily Larson with our Community Outreach and Engagement Team, and she is going to talk us through this. Good evening, Ms. Larson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Good to be with you this evening. Thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. I am going to share my screen here, and we will get right to it. All right. So as the mayor mentioned, we have been working through Board and Commission process improvement efforts, and a key part of that is a policy. And so I'm here tonight, as the mayor mentioned, as maybe the bread to the sandwich to get us started on our Board and Commission items, just to provide you with an update on the work that we've been doing, and then I'll turn it back over to the mayor to actually walk through those appointments. But leading us to this point, we have been implementing a pilot plan, so I'll go over that in a moment. I'll also share about our recruitment efforts that we implemented to get us to where we are now with the current round of appointments, and then provide some information on the Board and Commission interviews that we completed a few weeks ago. And with that, I will also confirm next steps for our policy development work. And so as a reminder, I was here with you back in November, or October, rather, and I walked through a pilot plan for five boards and commissions, the Advisory Board of Health, Creative Placemaking Commission, Human Rights Commission, Parts and Recreation Commission, and Sustainability Commission. And the purpose of this pilot plan was to help us do some learning and actually implement some of the changes that we're hoping to see happen as part of this Board and Commission Policy Improvement Work. And so a few highlights for you here with this pilot plan. We recruited for the current openings in November and December. We, for the first time, we offered a virtual information session in December for interested applicants, and then we coordinated interviews in January. Some of you were involved in that process directly. And so then after today, what you'll see happen is we'll be doing some reflecting and making adjustments to some of the policy language that we've drafted so far. We'll partner with our legal department to review that policy, and then we'll look sometime in the spring to have you adopt it, is the goal. So each, each time we have a Board and Commission opening, we walk through a very intentional recruitment plan. And the purpose of that is really to make sure we're reaching a diverse group of applicants, so a lot of different backgrounds in the community to encourage them to serve in, in a border commission role. And so we had 11 openings. We received 40 applications with an asterisk. There were a few, you didn't see all 40 applications come through, not all were eligible to serve, primarily non-residents. And then we also, in, in order to measure our ability to attract a diverse group of residents, we collect demographic information on the application. So that's what you see on the table on the right. So we look at things like zip code, so where do people live across the city? We look at race or ethnicity. We look at age ranges and housing status. And with the exception of zip code, all of those questions are optional. But we do, we've been collecting it now for a few years, and it helps us to track who it is that we're reaching and look at that on an aggregate level. And part of the reason why we do that is to help us measure the impact of some of our racial equity business plan goals. So it's really about equity and inclusion and thinking about which perspectives are represented on boards and commissions. In order to, to ensure that we do have many different perspectives, we need to first start with that applicant pool and make sure that people are applying from different backgrounds. And so that's the purpose of this slide is just to demonstrate the outcomes of our intentional recruitment plan. We partner with Board and Commission liaisons and current members, and also as staff with the Community Outreach and Engagement Division, doing a lot of outreach as part of that plan. So we conducted interviews a few weeks ago, and the purpose was to gain a deeper understanding of the qualifications of our applicants, and also to develop a recommendation for you as city council to consider when making appointments. And so to do that, we had a interview panel, which consisted of three members of the city council and a representative from each border commission with openings, so eight total individuals. We had three simultaneous interview panels at once, and really the purpose there was to consider the time, the time commitment that it took to interview all of those applicants that came through. And so we had three going at once. Each interview lasted 15 minutes and took place virtually using the Zoom platform. And then once we walked through each of the interviews, we had a debrief discussion with the individual panels. So with the three separate panels, we had different groupings of boards and commissions. So we had Human Rights with Creative Placemaking. We had our Advisory Board of Health with Sustainability, and then we had the Park Commission interviewing in their own panel. The main rationale behind the separation of the three was really a numbers game, just trying to figure out how to balance with the applications we received. And so then each individual panel debriefed and developed a recommendation for who to appoint for the openings. We walked through a reflective conversation and asked questions such as which candidate would have the greatest impact on the work of this border commission. And then we did a large group consensus opportunity. So we had all three panels come back together, and we did a thumb voting exercise. So first, we heard a presentation of the recommendation, and then did some work to ensure that the large group also felt consensus around what was being recommended. So if you put your thumb up, that meant you were very enthusiastic about the recommendation, very enthusiastic about your support. If your thumb was to the side, that meant that you supported it, maybe not with a lot of excitement, but you were on board. And then a thumb down meant that we needed to continue to discuss or maybe ask questions or resolve some things to reach that consensus point. And we did reach consensus on all five of the recommendations that were developed. We also spent some time reflecting on the process, and so I, I really felt a lot of gratitude for our panelists because not only did they conduct a large number of interviews, two debrief discussions, but they also spent some time reflecting and really helping staff understand what worked well, what was the value that was seen in the process, and some ideas for how we can make some adjustments and improve upon it for the future. And so ultimately, there was consensus around this notion of, you know, you can see something in an application, but having both, having the opportunity to interview and learn from the candidates in that way, added a lot of value to this process. Some people maybe would have been considered on their application or wouldn't have been considered, but then were able to add some context and some more personalization to it that helped them stand out as candidates through the interview process. It was really also valuable to have representatives from each border commission there on the panel to provide that perspective of what's going on at, on the ground level for these boards or commissions. And then some suggestions too about, you know, looking at the time that was asked of those panelists. It was a full eight-hour day on a Saturday in January. And so thinking about how we may make adjustments there to help lessen the time burden, and then also asking some questions to help the individual boards or commissions learn a little bit more specifics to the work that they're doing. And so that's an overview of the process. Next steps that you'll see, we'll be doing a survey for city council and the interview panel so that you can provide your input into the process and, and let us know what you thought about some of the changes that we made. Whether you served on an interview panel or not, you are a key component to this entire process from start to finish. And so thinking about those perspectives and what we may want to consider as we move forward with the policy, and we'll also be sharing a survey with the applicants. They, some of them may be watching here tonight as well, so we've been in touch with them with updates on, on the timeline for this process. And then we'll make those adjustments to the policy, and as I mentioned, go through the process of partnering with legal and coming back to you all later in the spring. And so there's an invitation for you throughout this process, and I just want to remind you, if you do have additional comments, questions, or any suggestions for us to consider, you can contact me directly. My information is here on the slide. But at this time, I'd just like to close my formal comments and invite you to share any questions or comments with me before we move into appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Counsel, questions here? Councilmember Coulter.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I just kind of wanted to, excuse me, sort of publicly say that, you know, as you know, this is, this sort of more involved process and more intentional process is something that I've advocated for since I was elected to city council, and I, I thought this was a, a vast, vast improvement over the way that we've done it in years past. I thought this was a really valuable experience and a really, just a really good way to go about it. As you noted, Emily, there obviously there are some things that, that I think could be done better in the future, and, and had I, had I known I was in for a full eight-hour day, I may not have volunteered to serve on the interview panel. But it, it really was a great experience and, and really, really good to talk to all of the applicants, and it certainly made my decision process much more informed. So I just want to thank you for the thought that you put into the process, and I think it definitely did result in a better product. So thank you.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think, I think that as somebody who did not necessarily have experience with doing it any other way, I'll have less of a comment on how this is improved or not improved, of course. But I, one of the questions I, I wanted to ask was, so obviously, the, there are metrics here. How many people applied? How many people will be, you know, how many people who we will appoint? And then, so there's this group of people that are there who we have not chosen to have on these commissions, but they obviously indicated a lot of interest in our city. And so I'm just curious about whether or not we have follow-up plans or we have engagement plans with those, for those folks. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I do think, council member, that that's always been a conversation we've had about this, that we have people, we only have two openings and we have a dozen applicants, that kind of thing. So what to do with the other 10 folks to try and keep them engaged and involved? And I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Emily, to, to fill us in on any progress on that. But I agree, that's always been kind of the, well, what next? How do we keep people involved, keep people engaged, even if they weren't able to be appointed? There's still, as I said earlier, there's plenty to do. We can always find folks to put to work. So, Ms. Larson, do we, do we have any progress on that, or what do you have to offer with that for us?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, when we notify applicants of the outcome of the appointment, so if they're not selected, we do provide some information on how to stay connected with boards and commissions, and then also how to stay connected with the city. And so a lot of boards and commissions have, you know, they have their formal members, but they also have maybe subcommittees or volunteer groups who may come in and help support the work in less formal ways. We also have volunteer opportunities at the city that we share about, and then we talk about different ways or different public participation opportunities, so point to some of the different projects that we have active opportunities for input. And then there's always an offer at the bottom of that page for connecting with a staff person from the Community Outreach and Engagement Division to talk one-on-one about how you may want to stay connected. And we do also commit to notifying all applicants of future openings for a one-year period after they submit an application. So those are the current efforts. And then as part of the Board and Commission Process Improvement Work, I've been partnering with a lot of the staff liaisons and connecting with current members about, just thinking about the engagement experience around boards and commissions and different opportunities that we can build in to, to really have more people involved. Ever since my time in coordinating this work, we see far more applicants than we have openings, and I'm always disappointed in, in that, in the sense of, you know, really wanting to have had more opportunity to plug people in. So there's a lot more intentional efforts going on in that regard, but definitely room to, to build and to grow with that as well.
Councilmember Lohman.
Well, and to add on to that, I'll, I'll always take a shameless plug for the work groups that we have as well with the Sustainability Commission. And then also, Emily, I'm surprised you didn't mention the Learn to Lead program as well. I'm sure that's already in the piece. Those are just a couple of ideas that I could think of just off the top of the head that, for those folks who haven't already had the opportunity to participate, that Learn to Lead. A number of the folks that we're going to see in the recommendations today have had that experience. So.
Thank you, council member. Counsel, any additional questions? Well, I, I want to echo Councilmember Coulter's comments that this is just a vast improvement, a great improvement. Although I, I mean, I will say, as, as the old guy now, I do remember a time on the council when we literally had to recruit people to apply for boards and commissions because we didn't have anybody applying. And so to have this problem is a much better problem to have, and I'm, I'm very happy that we actually do have it. But I, it always, it felt uneven, it felt inconsistent, it felt without a process to actually have a process in place to do this kind of thing. And so I think this is just a world of improvement. So thank you so very much for, for your work, Emily, and for the work of the folks who helped you through this. And thanks to the, the members of the, the interview panels that went through it, council member, council members. Thanks for spending a Saturday up here and spending all your time and making those recommendations because it really just adds to the process, and I think really adds to not only the, the outcome for the, the good candidates that we get forward, but I think also for the process, for the people who are actually doing it. They know full well that they've had an opportunity to, to come forward and be heard and, and to be spoken to and with about the opportunities that are there. So I think it's a, it's a great improvement. Know there's room for more improvement and look forward to seeing what changes you got in store as we can move forward, but very happy with the way it looks now. So well done.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor and members. I will look forward to the appointments that you're about to make, and I will stay available in case any questions arise during that process. So thank you for your time.
Sounds good. Counsel, any, anything final for Ms. Larson on this? If not, we will move on our, on, we will move on in our agenda, and we will move on to some appointments. And our first appointment is item 8.2, which is an appointment to the Advisory Board of Health. And we have two openings, one provider, one consumer member. And for two terms, the, they both run from March 1st, 2022 to February 28th, 2025. So the way we always have done this in the past is we rotate around who gets the start, and we make our way through the, the voting process. And everybody gets, in this case, you'll get two votes. And if we get to a point where we don't have two candidates with four votes, we will eliminate the candidates that got zero or one votes or, or so on, and then we'll vote again until we get to a point where we have two candidates with a majority of the council voting to appoint them to the, to the Advisory Board of Health and to all of our commissions that we're going to be talking about today. Everybody clear on the, the process? Councilmember DeLisandro, you're first time through, you're clear on the process?
I think so, but if you choose me last, that would be great.
We won't make our way through this. Mr. Brillard, you didn't give me the cheat sheet about who starts on all these because I know we've been rotating around, so I'm just gonna gonna have to work through this and actually count on you because you've got it alphabetically. Why don't we start? The, the nuns at St. Michael's School always told me to use the alphabet whenever possible, so I'm going to rely on you, and we will do it alphabetically and then just kind of work our way through. Okay?
So alphabetically, Mayor, you would go first.
Okay. For the Advisory Board of Health, I will vote for Kelsey Ford and Andrea Puckett.
Councilmember Carter.
Kelsey Ford and Andrea Puckett.
Councilmember Coulter.
Ford and Puckett.
Councilmember DeLisandro, do you want me to come back around to you, or we'll go alphabetically?
I'm great. Thank you. Ford and Puckett for me, please.
Councilmember Lohman.
Ditto. Ford and Puckett.
Councilmember Martin.
Ford and Puckett.
Councilmember Nelson.
Uh, Puckett and Ford.
Mr. Mayor, I have seven votes for Kelsey Ford and seven votes for Andrea Puckett.
Counsel, I'd look for a motion to appoint Kelsey Ford and Andrea Puckett to positions on the Advisory Board of Health. And just to be clear here, I think, as I said, one needs to be a, a consumer and one being a provider. Do we have clarifications as to which of each this would be? I think we did have this in. Thank you, council member. Mr. Sable.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Kelsey Ford is a provider and Andrea Puckett is a consumer member seat.
Thank you very much. Thanks for that clarification. Thank you both. So I'd look for a motion to appoint Kelsey Ford and Andrea Puckett to the Advisory Board of Health.
So moved.
Mayor, second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Carter, a second by Councilmember Lohman to appoint Kelsey Ford and Andrea Puckett to the Advisory Board of Health. No further council discussion on this. Mr. Brillard.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
DeLisandro.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations to Kelsey and to Andrea. Well done. Moving on to item 8.2. Excuse me, 8.3, trying to find it here on my computer screen. These are appointments to the Creative Placemaking Commission. We have two openings there. We have two openings there for two expired terms. These will run from March 1st, 2022 to February 28th, 2025. Counsel, any questions regarding this one? If not, Mr. Billard.
And Mayor, in terms of order, we'll just randomize the, or we'll, we'll rotate through the alphabetical order as, as to not make you go first each time.
Oh, no, no, no. The, the way we typically do it now, councilmember Carter would be first this time.
Yep, that, that's essentially what I was saying.
That's the way we work our way through it.
Yep, thank you.
Beth McCoy and Logan Sour, Sawyer.
Councilmember Coulter.
McCoy and Sour.
Councilmember Delisandro.
McCoy and Sour.
Councilmember Loman.
Sour and McCoy.
Councilmember Martin.
McCoy and Sour.
And councilmember Nelson.
McCoy and Sour.
Mayor Bussie.
Mayor Bussie.
McCoy and Sour.
So we've got seven votes for Beth McCoy, seven votes for Logan Sour.
Counsel, I would look for a motion to appoint Beth McCoy and Logan Sour to the Creative Placemaking Commission.
So moved.
Second, Martin.
Motion by councilmember Carter, second by councilmember Martin to appoint Beth McCoy and Logan Sour to the Creative Placemaking Commission. Hearing no further council discussion on this. Mr. Billard.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Delisandro.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. And I just want to point out, if folks are watching here, obviously, we've gone 7-0 on our first two votes. And the votes, I think, that the council is making, not speaking for anyone else but myself, but the votes that the council, I believe, is making is based on the recommendations that we heard from the process that we just discussed earlier. These are the folks that came forward out of the process that we, that we've put in place to try and vet the folks ahead of time, to actually give them a good vetting and a good interview process. And that's, that is why we ended up with a couple of 7-0 votes. And frankly, won't be surprised if we see additional lot-sized votes based on the recommendations that we've, we saw from, from the committees that we've put together for this. With that, we will move on to item 8.4, our Human Rights Commission Appointments. Again, we have two openings there for two expired terms, and these terms would run, again, from March 1st, 2022 to February 28th, 2025. Counsel, any questions on this? If not, Mr. Billard.
All right, Mr. Mayor, this time around, the voting will begin with councilmember Coulter.
Weirzma and Zomerand.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Weirzma and Zomerand.
Councilmember Loman.
Weirzma and Zomerand.
Councilmember Martin.
Weirzma and Zomerand.
Councilmember Nelson.
Weirzma and Zomerand.
Mayor Bussie.
Weirzma and Zomerand.
And councilmember Carter.
Weirzma and Zomerand.
Again, so that's seven votes for Stephanie Weirzma, seven votes for Shelby Zomerand.
Counsel, with two 7-0 votes, I would look for a motion to appoint Stephanie Weirzma and Shelby Zomerand to the Human Rights Commission.
So moved.
Mayor, second.
Motion by councilmember Delisandro, a second by councilmember Coulter to appoint Stephanie Weirzma and Shelby Zomerand to the Human Rights Commission. Hearing no further council discussion, Mr. Billard.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman. Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Did I get the vote twice, or what?
Oh, I came back to you, sorry. Thought I missed you there. Councilmember Nelson.
Dwayne can have my vote. Aye.
And Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, I do think that you skipped me. Not on purpose, but I know why. It's because you're round-robining everything, and I would have been normally first, but now I'm last. So yes, I approve.
My apologies, councilmember Delisandro.
No worries, thank you. 7-0, thanks.
No disrespect intended, our apologies. All this voting, fast and furious, it gets out of hand sometimes, you know how it is. So counsel, with 7-0 votes, I'd look for a motion to appoint Stephanie Weirzma and, oh, we did do that, that was just the vote we did, I'm sorry. See, I'm confused now, too. I'm confused now, too. With that, we were going to move on to the Parks, Arts and Recreation Commission Appointments. Mr. Sable.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Just to add to further confusion, I just wanted to notify the councilmembers that the recommendation was not listed correctly in the scoring sheet, and candidate number eight was not actually recommended. Candidate number four was recommended, based on the conversation. Now, that doesn't mean the council can't obviously change its mind and follow different recommendations, but replace candidate eight with candidate four, if you would.
In the recommendation, recommendation.
In the recommendations, as outlined in the packet.
For the parks.
For the Parks Commission, yes.
Everybody clear on that? Very good, if we're clear. Mr. Billard.
All right, Mr. Mayor, this time the voting will begin with councilmember Delisandro.
Eager and Fleck.
Councilmember Loman.
Eager and Fleck.
Councilmember Martin.
Eager and Fleck.
Councilmember Nelson.
Eager and Fleck.
Mayor Bussie.
Daryl Eager and Chris Fleck.
Councilmember Carter.
Eager and Fleck.
And councilmember Coulter.
Fleck and Eager.
Mr. Mayor, we have seven votes for Daryl Eager, seven votes for Chris Fleck.
Counsel, I would look for a motion to appoint Daryl Eager and Chris Fleck to our Parks, Arts and Recreation Commission.
So moved, Coulter.
Second, Martin.
Got a motion by councilmember Coulter, a second by councilmember Martin to appoint Chris, Daryl Eager and Chris Fleck to the Parks, Arts and Recreation Commission. Hearing no further council discussion on this. Mr. Billard.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Delisandro.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations to Chris and Daryl. And our final appointments of this evening are for the Sustainability Commission to replace the three commissioners that we noted earlier, who are timed out after two terms of service on the Sustainability Commission. We start this one, I believe, with councilmember Lo, Loman, councilmember Loman, thank you.
That's kind of ironic. With Begash, Scott and Stigora.
Councilmember Martin.
Begash, Scott and Stigora.
Councilmember Nelson.
Begash, Scott, Stigora.
Mayor Bussie.
Angela Begash, Andy Scott, Beth Stigora.
Councilmember Carter.
Begash, Scott and Stigora.
Councilmember Coulter.
Stigora, Begash and Scott.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Begash, Scott, Stigora.
All right, Mr. Mayor, that's seven votes, Angela Begash, seven votes for Andy Scott, seven votes for Beth Stigora.
Counsel, I would look for a motion to appoint Angela Begash, Andy Scott and Beth Stigora to the Sustainability Commission.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Delisandro and a second by councilmember Carter to appoint Angela Begash, Andy Scott and Beth Stigora to the Sustainability Commission. Hearing no further council discussion on this. Mr. Billard.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Delisandro.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. I want to stress again that the, the votes, the 7-0 votes were, were the result of the recommendations that we had with the process that we put in place. And so I really do want to thank, once again, Ms. Larson and all the folks that served on the, the interview panels and brought for these recommendations forward. I want to thank everybody who applied and was not appointed tonight. We have, we, there are, there are many, many opportunities to get involved in the city, and I, I hope you take advantage of them because we, we need good people to do good things in the city, and, and we're looking to you based on your interest, your expertise, just your passion for the city to, to come forward. So please do that. And I do want to say congratulations to all the folks that we've appointed this evening. Looking forward to working with you and looking forward to the work that you're going to do over the next three years on the different boards and commissions that we've just appointed you to. So, well done. I, I think that's a, a step up in terms of how we do these appointments and the process that we're using to make these appointments. So, thanks much for, for the folks who worked to put it together and who actually got it done. So thank you so very much. Moving on in our agenda to item 8.7, which is a discussion on multi-park, multifamily parking standards and an update where we are with the, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, 8.7, I jumped up to 8.8. 8.7 is the single and two-family home standards and accessory dwelling unit update. And this will be led by, I see Glenn Markergaard, I know that Mike Palermo is going to be helping us out as well. Good evening to everybody and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mike, how are you?
Good here. Good. All right. Everyone see my screen?
We are ready to go.
Okay, so I'm, first item I'll be, I've got two items tonight, will be talking about single family and two-family development standards and updates that we're looking to make to our zoning code. And as part of this, we'll also be discussing, Sean James will jump in toward the end to talk about accessory dwelling units, understanding that this is kind of a spectrum of housing and that, you know, we go from low density to high density, and there's in-between gradations there. And so he'll be kind of talking about some opportunities there for updates as well. So to give some background for updating our single family and two-family development standards, kind of developed some overarching goals. One was to encourage more housing options, recognizing that Wilmington grew really quickly during the 50s, 60s, and a little bit in the 70s, and it's really kind of a standard housing type that was developed, and you can even see the development change as different decades and different housing types were developed over time. But we had this large boom and kind of offer one housing stock, and we want to encourage more different housing styles, recognizing that there's different needs nowadays. Another opportunity there is to increase affordability as we, affordability and ownership particularly, we talked about single-family homes generally are more owner-occupied. So finding ways to be more affordable can help with ownership affordability. Kind of related to that is racial equity, making sure that we're not creating issues and excluding people through having just a uniform housing type, making sure we have that, again, spectrum of housing available. And also looking at ways that we can encourage health and sustainable communities. So I'll kind of go quickly through this because there's a lot of information to get through, and there'll be some holes that I'll get through as we get into some of the, the details, but just some background. So what are some things that, with affordability that we can address? So this is really looking at the zoning code where, where our development standards are housed. So looking at the zoning code, we can see things like land costs, if we're shrinking our, our land requirement, our lot size requirement that could chip away at land costs. Maybe some of the design features we require, like garages or building materials could affect costs. But we also have to recognize that there's a lot of soft costs and other costs and issues that are out there that can affect affordability and equity, such as the cost of mortgages, closing costs, you know, the interest rates fluctuate, realtors sometimes do steering that we don't control, there's issues with appraisals come in at different values for different races sometimes. So there, there's all these other issues that the zoning code just doesn't address. So there's bigger issues out there, but the zoning code really can look at those design requirements and trying to remove barriers here. Because when we look at equity, our ownership rate for our BIPOC community is only 35% of households, whereas our white, non-Hispanic households, it's about 75%. So that's a pretty big difference between our BIPOC and white communities. So there's a lot of work to be done, but this is just one small piece of the puzzle. Another issue that we have is just rising housing costs. In 2008, after the crash, you can see in this chart here, we just kind of plummeted on the Twin Cities on unit growth. And this is all units across the board, but this line here that's kind of a slow decline shows that we're growing in, at slower rates, but we weren't producing enough units to, to address that growth. So we were under-producing for a period where we started to catch up a little bit, 2018, 2019. We're in this catch-up period, but we need to over-produce to make up for that. And so, you know, moving forward, we'll see if that does happen. But that's part of why we see a lot more of the multifamily coming through. And while in the single family, we're not going to get a ton of units, we can also recognize that there is some potential here, again, chipping away at the edges. And then as we look at health and environment, we, we look at health, there's, there's lots of different impacts to air quality or social determinants of health, but really the biggest advantage of a single-family home is, is especially in ownership opportunities, that stable housing. You're, you're, you know where you're living, you know where your healthy food options are, your schools are, your, your community, you kind of get invested in that community. So that stable housing really can help with those social determinants of health. As we look at environment, we kind of look at some system-wide approaches that we do as a city. You know, we've talked about our work plan, looking at transportation, looking at parks and all those interrelated. But we can also look at the site-specific. And so what we've done in the past for the site-specific is really remove barriers because the building code sets a minimum standard, energy standard, and we can't go above and beyond the building code. So what we can do is just kind of remove some of those barriers. We've made it easier to do solar, we've talked about composting, things of that nature. So we can't necessarily require it, but we've made some inroads in removing those barriers. And so when we look at what can we do with our zoning code, really came apparent with both health and environment, that it really went down to our minimum lot size. So this next part of the presentation, I'll kind of go into some of the sections that we're looking at changing. At some point, I'll have a poll here, and I'll put in the chat a link to that poll. And you can either directly go to that if you're on a computer, if you're at, in the council chambers, it might be more difficult than the iPad, but you can type it in on your phone, it works pretty quick that way, and we'll have kind of live results. It kind of gives an opportunity of see where you're at as we look moving forward to ordinance, which will be the next step. So leading up to this point, I've met with the Planning Commission and HRA doing two study sessions, and they've come up with these recommendations. And some items, they've had a kind of a clear idea of where they wanted to go, some are a little less clear, but we'll get into that. Staff has been meeting a few months now, leading up to this, talking about all these different issues, and it's an interdepartmental group with our engineering division, sustainability, health, assessing, building, environmental health, HRA. It was a fairly large group, a lot of, a lot of good discussion that we've had to kind of get to what are those core issues that we can really address to have some, some impactful, meaningful changes. So the big one really was minimum lot size. So currently, we require for our single-family homes, a minimum lot size of 11,000 square feet, and for a corner lot, it's a little bit larger, 15,000 square feet. We also allow two-family homes in our, in our R1 zoning district, and that has a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, so a little bit larger, but still smaller than two single-family homes. And again, corner lots a little bit larger. Now, we do have some other zoning districts, our S1 and our 1A. our S1 and our 1A, but there's very few of those lots, so we're most, we're looking at the R1 zoning district. And when we talk about minimum lot size, it's intrinsically related to our lot width, because if you think about it, our blocks are not changing, our streets are kind of set, so that length is already kind of set. So, if we're going to talk about reducing our lot size, we have to talk about reducing our lot width. Currently, we have a prevailing or median lot width, where we take properties within 500 feet, find the median, and you have to be within 80% of that median. That really will prohibit any sort of development realistically. If you want to have any sort of redevelopment just on a standard lot, you're going to have to get four units, or four properties, just to do five, a fifth unit, to squeeze that in there. So, really, we're recommending removing that median lot width, recognizing that that is a big barrier to any sort of infill development. So, as we got into what our lower bound would be, staff has kind of settled on 50-foot lot width, which would equate to about 6,500 square foot minimum lot. So, that's pretty substantial compared to, comparisons to today. But this would allow many lots that are 100 feet wide to be subdivided, which we do have, we do have 100-foot lots out there that are kind of throughout the neighborhoods. The advantage is this is compact design. When we're talking about walkable neighborhoods, you get more people being able to walk to parks or transit, you know, the healthy, less car-dependent when you can have more units, that more density. One of the issues with this is that we do have an impervious surface limit of 35%. We talked about this with our engineering division, and if we could go above this impervious surface limit, they said, they basically said no, it would require us to redo our whole utility, redo all our utilities, and that's not something that we really want to do citywide. So, they did kind of say we can do some similar language that we have in our two-family home, where we can, we might be able to do some mitigating factor to go slightly above that. But 35% is kind of our limit. So, understanding that, anything lower than 50 feet just not, is not viable. You'll see in the packet, there are some communities, Richfield has 4500 square foot lots, Eden Prairie has 4,500 square foot lots. In the case of Eden Prairie, it's new development, so they're able to design with that kind of stormwater mitigation built-in in that new subdivision. And in case of like Minneapolis or Richfield, they have an alley in the back, so they don't have to worry about a long driveway that has a lot of runoff that takes your impervious surface. You have a back-loading alley. So, we don't really, I think we have two or three blocks with alleys, so not really an option for us to go below this 50 foot. Another, so this does increase financial viability. If you can buy one lot and split it, it's much easier, or two lots and split it, that's much easier than having to get three or four, you know, separate owners to get on board. But it would, it is denser, it would require a comprehensive plan amendment. So, the R1 fits under our low-density guide plan, which caps out at five units per acre. So, this would be above that, so we would have to address that in our comp plan. Option two, and this is the preferred option from the HRA and the Planning Commission during their joint meeting, they felt that this was a good step, it was denser but not too dense, would be 60 feet with a 7,800 square foot lot. We do have some lots that are 120 square foot, so there are other opportunities for that single lot split. It is still more compact design, still has that increased financial viability, still has that issue with the comp plan amendment where we'd have to address our comp plan. But some thought this was a good starting spot. We kind of had some that really wanted to go as small as possible, some that were a little concerned, but most of the Planning Commission and HRA have kind of settled in, and this is a good option. And they also thought, you know, if we get, don't get any infill development as a result of this, then maybe in a couple of years, you can, we can reevaluate and go smaller if needed, or, you know, as with all our codes, see how it's, how effective or ineffective it is, and make adjustments as we move forward. Then the third option would be to go to a 70-foot lot, which is still smaller than our current standard of 80 feet, and 8750 for the square foot minimum, or minimum. So, obviously, less opportunity for redevelopment. But the benefit to this, and which is why this is kind of the option we stopped at, was because this brings a lot of our existing lot, non-conforming lots into conformance. So, about 15% of our lots were already below 11,000 square feet, and I think 97% or 98% of them were above 9,000 square feet. So, essentially, this is just saying, recognizing that we already have this in Bloomington, so our standards shouldn't be saying that a large chunk of our properties are non-conforming. So, this really is just matching what is existing today. It wouldn't require a comprehensive plan amendment, but obviously, it's not quite as dense as the other two, and that opportunity for info is not quite, not quite there. So, with that, I'll kind of open it up for discussion, and I will add into the chat the poll link, one moment. This is one of our redirects, so you can click on that. Are there any questions or any comments, people?
Councilmember Martin, a question?
Councilmember Seth.
Thank you, Mike. Apologies if I missed this, but roughly, how many lots do we have in the community that are at the 100, and then how many at the 120?
I don't have that number. It's actually, it's kind of hard for us to get that number. It's not a lot of lots. They're out there, but it's not a ton. And then you also have to think about the condition of the existing house, where is the position? If you're going to buy that and split it, then do they have to tear it down and then create separate utilities for a second unit? So, the likelihood, so that's where, we're not anticipating with any of these options, a ton of redevelopment occurring, because there are those costs that are associated with it. But, and then affordability is not really upfront necessarily, because it's new construction, you've got utilities, and it, you know, it's just more expensive for new construction. But over time, 20, 30 years from now, you're talking about likely a smaller house, a smaller lot, that does become the more affordable unit in time. But maybe Glenn has a better sense, but it was one of those things I couldn't quite figure out how to get out of our GIS.
Just, I was just trying to kind of think what the sample size was at 120, if we were going to potentially come back and reevaluate, so that makes sense.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just actually, a similar question to Councilmember Martin. I was just wondering if there's any way of mapping where 100-foot lots are, 120-foot lots, where the opportunities were, just to sort of at least give us a visual and potential impact of that as we take a look at which option we might want to go with. But in general, I would say that I support having these smaller lots. I think one of the things that I've really learned is, you know, as a community that has a lot of seniors here, many of them are still continuing to live in large homes, which is great around the holidays when, you know, families come back and grandchildren come back. But, you know, the rest of the year, it's maybe a little bit more than they need. But there's not a lot of these smaller-type formats that are really workable for them. So, I think this type of housing is something that, for those people that want to downsize and stay in Bloomington, near their friends, near all their churches, and all of that stuff, I think this is a really good option for people. So, appreciate the thought process here.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. That's one thing I meant to bring up, too. It creates movement in the market, right? If someone might want that smaller home, and hopefully, moving from a bigger home as their needs change, it creates that more spectrum of housing, that movement, too. So.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I know that predominantly, our residential zoning is R1. Did you consider the RS1 zoning district as well? I know it's a much smaller portion, but they are larger lots, and I'm curious if that was part of the conversation at all?
We didn't, just because there is, because, yeah, it really is just a small portion. I'm trying to even remember what that number was. Maybe Glenn knows, but it's in the hundreds, first like 30,000 R1 lots. So, it's, you know, it, yeah. So, when we're talking about impact and scale, it, yeah, that's why we didn't.
I guess I'd be curious, and it doesn't have to be now, but I don't know the background of why we have these small kind of neighborhood, pockets of neighborhoods that are RS1, and would we consider just standardizing our residential zoning across the city so that it's all consistent? I don't know if that's the conversation to have as part of this one, or a different conversation, but it seems a little odd, and so maybe should be a consideration.
Yeah, and I think there was a reason for them at one time with sewer capacity, I think, sewer hookups and water hookups, but I think over time, and looks like Glenn might have some more detail on that.
Yeah. And there are Bussie Councilmembers, good evening. In terms of the R1A district, I think there are just seven lots that are R1A, and those are all lots that do not have access to sewer. So, they have to have Septic, and hence the larger lot sizes. For RS1, I'm going to guess there's between 1 and 200 lots that are RS1, and that has really been neighborhood-driven. Neighbors in those areas are probably originally developers, are preferred to have the larger lot sizes. And in some instances, we've had neighborhoods rezoned from R1 to RS1 in order to try to block subdivisions in their neighborhoods. So, it's very much been neighbor-driven.
Thank you for providing that background. That's helpful.
Councilmember Lohman, then Councilmember DeLisandro, and Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just a couple of questions. When you look at the smaller option, any concerns from a public safety standpoint in terms of fire protection or that type of thing?
No, not from a public safety perspective. With that density, it seems like it's a considerable difference, but in reality, it's not a huge amount of difference, amount of people that you're putting there, traffic is not going to be a huge difference. It's one of those things that, which is why I tried to provide some of those pictures. It's like, when you see it, you go, oh, that's just a normal neighborhood in Richfield that I, so, no concerns from a public safety perspective. And the reality, again, if we're probably not going to get a huge amount of these, that will be putting any sort of strain on our utilities or public safety.
Did staff at all look at, I know that, my understanding is on the east side, on many of those streets, those streets are a lot larger than as you move further west. Any thought of reducing the size of those streets in parallel with something like this, so that you'd get additional, you know, additional lot sizes for some of those smaller lots that are out there, that would then allow them to move into some of these larger square foot, footage?
Councilmember Lohman, not considerably. We did talk a little bit in the context, and we'll get to it, about parking, and recognizing that we, looking at complete streets and putting sidewalks in, and that kind of narrows the road a little bit. Is there still room for parking? And from our engineering perspective, yeah, there'll still be some on-street parking if needed in those situations. But are you suggesting in a way of putting that back alley in and narrowing the streets to get a smaller lot size?
As long as we're being creative, yeah, sure, why not? Why not put an alleyway in there? Why not? As long as you're opening up the door, it just, I just, I'm curious about that, because those, I know I've talked with Glenn Markergard about this in the past, about, you know, those streets are, you know, quite big, and we talk about walkability. And so, if you were to narrow those roads, I know we have initiative, and I'm kind of going to a different policy, we talk about if you narrow the roads, it also can reduce the speed by which that folks travel down the road. So, it kind of accomplishes both goals. One, you know, lengthening that out, you could also put a sidewalk, you know, on by the other side, but also giving some of those, you know, eastern more lots, a little bit more back, you know, of that, of that right-of-way. I just didn't know if there's any restrictions with that. Is there utilities underneath there? You know, is there, you know, some kind of limitation that would stop us from doing that or that alleyway idea that you put there? I've got one last idea that I want to run past you.
Yeah, and I think that is creative, and, yeah, I think the issue with that is also just existing housing. It would be a situation where you would, if you can get a whole block, then that, to redevelop. But people have existing garages that are facing the front, they're not gonna, you know, they're designed to face the street. And then, if we're going to have some, yeah, I'd have to think through it a little more and discuss it with our engineering division to see the viability of that, what those impacts would be.
Yeah, you could look at it as more of a long-term development piece, and certainly, I don't want to put you on the spot, so we could, we could take that offline. My next question is around just residential zoning itself. I know Minneapolis did the piece, you kind of referred to this earlier, and Councilmember Carter also brought it up as well. Have we looked at differing zoning, you know, with residential to try to encourage? Because I imagine we could create more, you know, residential zonings to kind of spur on and drive that. Did you look at that with this at all, or did you talk a little bit more about that?
We did talk about it a little bit, because recognizing that our R1 zoning district is pretty much our single-family zoning district. We thought at this time, it might be a little bit too much of an undertaking to have to rezone a bunch of properties, or to create that kind of different levels in zoning. It makes a lot of sense in newer communities where they have new subdivisions, but we were, yeah, didn't want to be too disruptive with this, because as you remember, Sean, a couple years ago, did the Bluff rezoning, and that was a huge undertaking to get 500 properties on the Bluff rezone. And, you know, as we're talking about doing that, that would likely have hundreds, if not thousands, of rezoned properties. And at this time, we just weren't willing to take on that effort.
I just, I just wonder about that, and this is my last thing, because we talked about, you know, at the outset of this, of this policy, that we, you know, we want to challenge some of those assumptions to bring affordability. And sometimes, that's the best means by which to drive that, is to comprehensively plan and kind of look around the city and kind of say, hey, here's where we want to make this happen, and then, you know, go out there with this new zoning code, and then kind of go down that route. And I think that that may be a more effective way of actually driving change, just in this council member's opinion, as we look at this. But I'll leave it.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, gentlemen. Just a quick question on, I know in my neighborhood, especially along the 35W frontage roads and things like that, there are a number of open lots. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to very quickly move on this, and do you have developers in discussion right now on some of the empty properties around town that, where we could take advantage of this, you know, kind of change, regardless of which option, you know, the kind of change would be valuable to us?
Yeah.
Sounds like Glenn wants to get in.
If you like. Councilmember Bussie, Councilmember DeLisandro, yeah, we do have several vacant properties along 35W, especially north of 86th Street. And with the recent And with the recent completion of the 494 project, which also includes 35W, MnDOT has new clarity about which of those parcels they will in fact need and which ones they won't. And they tentatively are okay with returning six of those lots kind of out of their control, so to speak. They are city-owned, but they were acquired with right-of-way acquisition loan funds. And so we do think there's a strong possibility that six of those can be returned for affordable home ownership. And we're working with MnDOT right now, and we do have developers interested as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Second question, if you don't mind. You mentioned the nature of storm runoff and the notion of 35% of impervious, you know, not being an issue. Have we done any work, or I suggest maybe, you don't have, if you've done it, great, but, you know, there's lots of really interesting semi-permanent or semi-pervious, is that the right word? Or porous, I guess, maybe semi-porous or porous options for, you know, green parking lots and things like that? Is there any option, instead of saying, oh, we can't go above 35%, which totally makes sense, but is there a way for us to use some of the other tools that we have or some of the other technologies that exist out there to enable some of what you're trying to do without impacting, you know, the inability for us to offer parking solutions or other solutions in these spaces?
Councilmember DeLisandro, we did talk about that with our engineering division, and that's where I kind of went quickly over it, but they're willing to be a little more flexible on that number and go above that if there are the mitigating factors. There's still, they're still a cap that they kind of have in their mind that they won't go above. But yeah, impervious surfaces or underground chambers that kind of do rate, rate, what's the word I'm looking for? It slows the rate to a level that, you know, so that still does infiltration. So they are willing to do that to accommodate that. So acknowledging that as we get to a smaller lot, that might be more of a constraint.
Well, the reason I bring that particular one up, folks, is that that actually becomes a solution for some of our other customers, other residents as well, who are looking to either repave their driveways or other things like that. If we can open that up and offer, and I don't want to say incentives in the financial sense, but incentives for doing some more ecologically sound choices around that, we can offset potentially some of the mitigating factors here as well. Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a few follow-up questions. In the R1 zoning, do we have any rules with regards to like garage sizes, exterior finishes, any of those types of items in there?
We do regarding garage sizes, and we'll talk about that in the next to come. As for materials, there are just building code requirements that we have with materials, so we don't have any extra above and beyond that we necessarily require.
Okay. Was there any discussion of having some of these different, depending on if it was a new development versus a redevelopment opportunity? You know, planning had recommended the 60 feet, but would maybe 50 feet work better on a completely new development with some of those vacant lots or other things like that? Just curious about your opinion on that.
I think that's where you do get into kind of the planned development process, where we can be maybe a little more flexible on a new development, understanding that there might be some sort of public interest in that. But we don't want to differentiate too much between new and old. We want to kind of treat all development the same.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Coulter.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep.
Okay, good. To be honest, my iPad, I wasn't sure it was going to hold out for the rest of the meeting doing WebEx through my iPad, so I tried my computer again. I don't have anything to actually add to the conversation right now. I just wanted to make sure that this worked. So I'm going to reconfigure my setup here, and you can move on with things.
Very good.
Okay. Do we want to try doing the poll? Some people have already started with the poll.
Somebody vote for me, because I don't have an iPad open.
If you want to, you can also voice, and I can just make a note here, too, but...
Well, and I was going to ask you a question on the 70-foot lots versus other things. And I like the notion of, if we already have 70-foot lots, we should make a, we should make those existing lots conforming. I mean, that just makes sense, and I get that and I understand that. Just trying to do the math in my head here to figure out how this would work with other lots. You said we've got 100-foot lots and 120-foot lots, so it does make sense. I mean, those divide in half neatly into the 50 and 60-foot lots. But I'm trying to do the math. If we set it at 70, do we then limit those? Those simply wouldn't then be redeveloped. We'd have a 70-foot lot and then a 50-foot lot left over that couldn't be developed. We'd have a, you know, a 30-foot lot that it becomes the neighborhood play lot or something along those lines. Back to Councilmember Nelson's point, how many of those lots are we talking about? That would help to know what kind of scale that we're talking about here. I'd be curious on that. I'm also curious, so if we did set that 70-foot lot and it became conforming, and then that would give folks in the existing 70-foot lots basically the ability to do knockdowns? I mean, right now, they're not allowed to because they're non-conforming lots, correct? You can't do a knockdown and rebuild. But if we made 70-foot conforming lots, they could do a knockdown and a rebuild. And have we given any thought as to what that would mean in terms of the existing housing stock, the naturally occurring affordable housing that we've got in place on those lots? And just, you know, a variety of other questions that I'm guessing I'm not quite sure what to answer. And my vote would be for the 70-foot lots there, so you can put me in blue, pink, and whatever color you put me in there. So that's what my vote, there you go, red, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. So any thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I mean, that is a real concern as well. That's why we kind of had some that were, let's go as small as we can, and some that were in your camp at the HRA and Planning Commission meeting that were concerned that this would displace people and kind of encourage that gentrification and tear down, and let's be honest, our affordable, more affordable neighborhood in the eastern part of Bloomington, you're right, we have those smaller lots that kind of part of why they're affordable, and because they were 50, 60 years ago when they developed, there's all their housing stock. So that is, that is a concern there. As with all of this, and I meant to say that everything's kind of a push-pull. You push a little bit, it's like a balloon. You push a little bit on one side, and it's going to push on another. And so there is, it is a balancing act. But yeah, that is a concern.
Absolutely. And I, you know, I say it's a concern, but also as as a council that sits here and wants to see a strong housing stock in the city of Bloomington, I can think of another, a number of homes that I have seen on 70-foot lots that a knockdown would probably be a good thing and a rebuild, just considering the, you know, what it brings, what it does to the neighborhood, to the overall quality of the neighborhood to have one house that is obviously beyond its useful life. So a lot of questions there, a lot of things that, I think this is going to be an interesting discussion as we move forward, especially as we consider if we would go with the smaller lots, then what exactly are we talking to go? These are, these are single-family lots. Or would they be two-family lots? Are we talking duplexes on these lots as well? And if so, what does that mean in terms of the density that we're hoping to achieve versus the density that may be detrimental to the existing neighborhood?
I think that might be a good segue into the other aspects to, Mr. Mayor, to go into some of the other things. So this one, we can just more for a head nod on approach rather than having a poll. But as you saw, our single-family lots are 11,000 square feet, and we add another 4,000 square feet for our corner lots. Now, the logic behind this was that a corner lot has a second front yard. So 30 feet, which is our setback requirement for that front yard, times by a lot that's typically 130 feet wide, you get just under 4,000 square feet. And I'm guessing that at that time, they just rounded to 4,000. Well, in reality, if you want to get nitpicky, that minimum square feet, it includes the side yard already. That minimum lot width of 11,000 square feet includes that side yard. So if you subtract that side yard out of it, we can chisel that down a little bit to 3250 for an additional requirement. Does that make sense to people? So this one is more just, does anyone have any concerns with that approach? Or is that okay, recognizing that 60 feet was kind of where we settled on that and using this to add for that corner lot? I think most people are shaking heads. And so this was the other big item that was a lot of talk with our Planning Commission and Housing Redevelopment Authority, and we talked about impervious surface. But we require four parking spaces per unit for our single family. This requires that two of them be enclosed within a garage. So this is just a quick calculation. This shows one of our 1040 Ramblers with a single-car garage, and the impervious surface would be about 1,600 square feet. By adding a second stall, you add about 500 square feet of impervious surface. So that just gives you an idea of what that impact is. But other impacts, obviously, it's more cost because there's more building structure that you're doing, you're doing more driveway. But there are benefits to having a two-car garage. You have built-in storage in your garage. So we kind of came up with a few different options. Planning Commission and HRA, they kind of settled on option one, which would be to reduce the two-car stall requirement to a single car. Some people were in favor of moving to maybe like a 1.5-stall garage, which acknowledges that we store stuff in our garage, that extra little space could be storage. Some were in favor of doing kind of a proof-of-parking for future expansion. But overall, the general consensus was that a single-car garage is a good minimum in recognizing that many developers are still going to do a two-car. We have developers doing new houses that do three and even four-star stall garages. So this is a minimum, and someone who is looking to do that more affordable step can do that. But they don't have to. So this is one we can open up for discussion.
Council thoughts on this? Minimum parking? Councilmember Lohman, and then Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Lohman.
So one of the questions I had with this particular thing is we look kind of long-term with driverless car and that type of thing. I just kind of thought that, you know, maybe, you know, you maybe would even have an option zero where there's no garage requirement at all, because you won't be storing your car. You know, there won't be a car stored there, it just goes somewhere else. And so I just wonder from a long-term perspective, you know, as we're looking, you know, out many years, what makes sense from a long-term perspective when we think about affordability? And that's one of the questions that I kind of have as we look at, you know, parking requirements and minimum requirements for units. And does it make sense to have, you know, any requirement there when you're trying to build these other spaces? Or whether or not we look to, can you, it doesn't matter what she used, as long as it can be converted to something else, either added or to be utilized for ADU or some other type of use? So I'm just curious about what you think, what thoughts are around that?
Councilmember Lohman, we did briefly discuss that. I think some, especially when we talked about sustainability and recognizing, you know, car dependency if you're requiring a garage. But I think part of that discussion revolved around just having storage, that not everyone utilizes their garage for a vehicle. So it kind of became a non-starter for some of our staff and frankly, planning commissioners and HRA, they, I think some were on your side, but some also felt that at minimum, we should provide at least the storage space of a garage if it's not for a vehicle, just for that kind of outside storage that happens for the things that we have, snow blowers or sleds or whatnot that you don't typically store in your house.
You could accomplish that through a shed, or maybe a lot of storage units around town.
Yep, I do that, too. Yep.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, was there any discussion, whether HRA, Planning Commission, anywhere? I'm just thinking, I am in favor of option one, but to the point Councilmember Lohman raised in terms of storage necessities, having that smaller garage space, putting up something like a shed. But if longer term, we're reducing the overall size of lots potentially, are we going to need to look at things like side setbacks for accessory structures or sheds to make sure that those aren't too awkward to be able to fit in there if longer term they need additional storage options, or we haven't gotten that far yet?
As for, you mean for the Councilmember Martin, the garage, are you saying the setback?
Yeah, if we're potentially going to shrink garages, meaning more folks may look at putting in sheds, or also shrinking lot sizes, is it going to be more awkward with our side setbacks for structures like that to fit a shed on these smaller lots? Is that maybe a couple steps ahead?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good thing to look at, but our requirements for accessory buildings and garages is up to five feet from the side property line. So it's not overly onerous, you know, if you're a 20-foot shed and you still have plenty of yard to work with. So that's on the rear end of the side, so. And really, that's where we typically have drainage and utility maintenance, so we don't want structures in that area anyway.
That's helpful, thank you.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we were to reduce this two-car stall garage requirement to one, and I apologize if you can hear a screaming three-year-old above me. But that, so current, I mean, current residential parking standards for single-family homes, it's four spaces for dwelling unit. Would that reduce that then to three?
That's one option. Councilmember Coulter, likely it would be two, recognizing, you know, if you're just going to do a straight garage or driveway, it would just be one space in the driveway and one in the garage. And this is where we kind of discuss, if you do need that overflow parking, we do have those wider streets that can accommodate that from time to time on the street. And maybe Glenn had a thought, maybe, or he's just moving around.
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, just chime in. One of the big issues on kind of off-street parking is snow emergencies. A lot of cities that require less off-street parking, they will have snow emergencies that require even odd days, whereas Bloomington just requires you to be off the street altogether. So if we do go to a much lower off-street requirement, we'd also have to think about altering our snow emergencies to provide that opportunity to stay on-street during snow clearing.
And I guess that's kind of, that's a piece of what I'm getting at, because I, at the risk of sort of taking us back to a debate no one wants to go back to, I recall when we were discussing residential RV standards, that parking access in driveways was a concern there. And I guess I've always kind of been curious in terms of that sort of public safety aspect, how much of a sort of a valid concern, I guess, is that really in terms of, I mean, snow emergencies, obviously, yes, that's a piece there. But, you know, in terms of public safety vehicle access and things like that. So I'd be curious if there's information on that, if there's any sort of correlation between that kind of parking requirement and additional on-street parking and how that affects public safety and that kind of thing.
Councilmember DeLisandro? I'm sorry, another question or a response, Mr. Palermo?
I was just gonna chime into, if you have that single stall, you're likely going to be a smaller house anyway. You know, if you're doing a larger house, it's not going to be as marketable with that single stall. So you're likely going to have a smaller household that might not have that extra vehicle need too.
Now it comes to Member DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I keep coming back to this idea of why do we require a garage? And not so much because I don't, I think the market will deal with that, is I guess my point. Like, I can't imagine that there would be, you know, many homes built today that don't have at least one garage. And so you kind of just do it anyway. So if you didn't have a minimum and you didn't have a maximum, people would just build the things that, you know, that the market would demand, would be kind of my thought on that. But, so I mentioned that specifically because of the idea. So when I, there are opportunities potentially for creativity here where, for example, the parking area for those homes is offset. So it's not part of each individual house, not that dissimilarly to condos that we have in my neighborhood, for example, that have sixteen condos built on a two, you know, two floors. And then off to the side, there's a set of stalls. So do you limit yourself in a situation where if you did a set of bungalows, for example, if you did a night, like nice eight-bungalow set of units that are a thousand square feet or something like that, do you limit yourself to, by providing the parking off the side, for example, or behind all the homes or something like that, by requiring that for each unit, they have a garage attached to them or whatever? I'm just kind of curious if we want to think about being more creative by just, we don't care about your garage, right? Because it's, the market will address that and will open up the creativity for people who want alternatives, like electric bicycles, for example, or something to that effect. I'm just curious, thank you.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Loman?
So for folks like my, no, former Councilmember, the Councilmember DeSandro said, how would I vote on this option thing if I want to do a zero?
Can you repeat that, Councilmember Loman, I had a little feedback there. Oh, if you wanted to go with the no requirement option?
Yeah, how would I do that?
We could do a hand vote through WebEx after Councilmember Nelson says his piece. We can do a hand vote if that's where people would like, are more interested, and we could raise our hand on that one. And actually, yeah, if that works.
Yeah, we can figure out a way to get a vote made, Dwayne, so we can do that. Councilmember Nelson, question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I found it helps if I actually raise my hand, it's easier for you to see that. So a couple of things here, similar question as last time. Do we have any idea how many houses in Bloomington have a single-car garage?
That's a good question. You know, I, we don't have that information. We don't have quite detailed information on our single-family lot as we do with our commercial properties. So I don't have a good sense. I know they're out there, but it's not a huge percentage that has a single-car garage. They do exist.
And then my first house in Bloomington had a single-car garage. I will admit it's slightly larger now, but nature of my business. The other question I had was, are there other communities that have no garage standard at all? To Councilmember DeLisandro's point of allowing the marketplace to determine what is needed for people, have we seen where that has been done and what the impact of it is? Or could we get more information on that?
Yes, I might have that information. But typically, most of the communities do have a garage requirement. I'm trying to see if I, yeah, most of them do have some sort of garage requirement, whether it's a sing, and some do have a single enclosed. But the ones that I'm looking at in my little cheat sheet here, they mostly do require a garage.
And then the last question I had, and it's not specific to this conversation, but if we do reduce it to one or less garages, I think that storage is something for us to take a look at. That is one of the things I've heard people have, will now have up to like four carts, maybe five trash carts, you know, snowblower, shovels, lawn mowers, all of those things. I think your storage point is good. And, you know, do we need to look at, you know, a screening standard or something like that if we're going to allow for a smaller garage? I'm not saying that I would advocate for that, but I think it's part of the conversation because I do think that this is one of the things that people look at. And it's like, hey, we want to, you know, when we drive down the road, we want things to look fairly neat and tidy without necessarily requiring people to go through the expense of a much larger garage than they may need or otherwise want. So again, not germane to the size of the garage, but I think at some point, if we do reduce this, worth a conversation.
And I will add in, Sean James just sent me a message saying that about ten percent of our single-family lots do not meet our parking requirements. And if Sean, you want to chime in if there's any more detail, because I forgot that you had done that. But I don't know if that looked at garages as well?
Yeah, so that ten percent is both lots that don't meet the enclosed parking requirement as well as don't have enough, don't have the four spaces. And the numbers I have are kind of rough, our data isn't perfect. But it's generally good enough when we're looking at, you know, twenty-one thousand or so single-family lots. And there's around twenty-five hundred properties that don't meet the enclosed parking requirement. So they either have no garage or only a one-car garage.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, at the risk of sort of revealing how I voted, I did vote for option five. But I just kind of wanted to clarify that I guess I'm sort of somewhere in between option one and option five, noting the concerns that I, the issues that I raised earlier. And, you know, to the point that Councilmember Nelson and others have made, that a garage is obviously more than just a place to park a car. And so I really just need more information about what sort of, what overall effect that would have, noting the differences between single-family homes and multifamily homes and the effect that might have on neighborhood safety and so on. But generally speaking, I, as we will discuss in not too long, I hope, I am of the opinion that lower parking requirements are better than higher. So just wanted to clarify that.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. So I also am leaning toward option five, no requirement. But I would like to have just more of an analysis of what those kind of unintended or unintended consequences would be if we didn't thoughtfully think through those. And so just kind of wanting to better understand what those might be in addition to storage. Are there any kind of other impacts that we haven't considered kind of in this moment? And then I am curious for the homes that are not currently conforming with our policy, so either have a single-car garage or do not have a garage, is there a consequence to residents for that? Or are they just kind of legally non-conforming?
Yeah, Councilmember Carter, you're right, they're legally non-conforming. They likely were, they're most likely built, you know, before the requirement was in place. They're probably, they're older homes that, you know, because also market demanded, but at some point, you know, people wanted two-car garages. So they're legally non-conforming. Another, to your first point about some unintended consequences, there is, you know, if you park your vehicle on a driveway, it is out in the open. You know, that catalytic converter theft is a thing. And, you know, having it secure in a garage provides that added level of security for that. But again, it isn't, setting a minimum or having no minimum doesn't preclude you from going above and beyond that.
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
I just want to chime in here, I think these, you know, these discussions are good to have. But to actually put it to a vote on some of these things that frankly are kind of hypotheticals has me a little uncomfortable. I think it's, I hate to go full data geek on everybody right here, but it's, I really need to know where we're talking about here. How many, how many we're talking about, where they are, what the unintended consequences might be, what streets are they on? Basically, we're talking about changing the nature of the neighborhoods that these lots, these homes are in. And I'd like to understand a little bit better exactly where that might be. Because I think it, my sense is telling me it's going to disproportionately affect a certain portion of our community, a certain part of our community, and perhaps to the better, perhaps not to the better, depending on, you know, who you are and what situation you're in. So I think I'd really, before I start logging in with votes about minimum parking or even lot sizes or whatever, I see three more polls coming up here shortly, whatever those might be, I think we need complete data and information as to exactly what we're talking about, where we're talking about, and to be able to map this all out. I know you guys are wizards with the GIS systems around here and can make it visual for everything. So I'd feel a lot more comfortable with that. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. I guess I'd be curious, just to clarify, are these polls more to just kind of give staff direction? In general, the direction we're thinking of going? And then we'll come back and have continued discussion. I guess what is the, kind of the intent behind having us do the polling? I assume it's not like, I mean, yeah, I guess it would just be helpful.
I, Councilmember Carter, I assumed it was sentiment, not, hence a poll and not a vote, if you will. But it's a very fair question, yeah.
I agree, I don't think we're setting policy here, we're setting direction, I agree. But it's, yeah, I'm just, how would staff respond to that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, DeLisandro, we, the intent really is to give us something to move forward when we start writing our ordinance, because, you know, that's where we're hopefully heading toward is an ordinance adoption. And sometimes we have these discussions and we have a lot of good points. And then staff is left here with, well, someone said this and this and this. And then we don't have a good sense of where do we really want to go? Because I think we've heard from you and from others that you're kind of leaning between two issues. And maybe this is one of those things, maybe we need to come back on just this one issue. Or maybe I provide, when I move forward with the ordinance, two options on this section so that we're prepared, recognizing that this one is a little bit more sticky compared to some of the others that will be coming up. Does that give a little more clarity?
Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, I think it does give some more clarity. And I think that one thing you may want to do is, you know, so for example, you know, I raised, you know, a number of us raised one that wasn't even on here, we may want to have an off-ramp on some of these that maybe none of these options are really fitting what, you know, what you want to do. And so that, I think that's also instructive for staff as well. Because then maybe we as a council want to go on. So I get nervous too about this type of thing because it kind of gives us lanes to kind of drive in. But these may not be the lanes that we really want to go down with respect to, I kind of think back to some of the stuff that we're working towards with our new mission and goals and that type of stuff that are coming up here. So I just, I'm thinking about that as I go down these and I look at these individual options here.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, you completely understand that. And we got to these lanes because of working with the planning commission and HRA in two joint sessions. We did have kind of more broader discussion and then kind of narrowed it down, and that's why you're seeing some of these. But I understand, you know, Council, you might have a different direction that you might want to go. And I encourage you to provide that if there is something that you would like to see differently.
I got no problem doing that.
So recognizing we're leaning towards the no requirement, but maybe we want some more information or more discussion on that, why don't we kind of move things along? The next issue is prevailing setback. This is one that doesn't come up that often, but when it does come up, it is kind of a sticky wicket. But essentially, we have this requirement that if your house is next to a house built before nineteen seventy-four, you are subject to prevailing setback requirement, which is essentially an average between the two houses that you have bought. So I couldn't really find an example, it was finding a needle in a haystack. But if you imagine the street, it's to the north here, and this house might be thirty feet, this house might be fifty feet, well, this house would then have to be at forty feet for their setback. And so the issue really becomes an equity issue because this person is now subject to a different setback because of what this person decided. And so there's a couple of approaches to mitigate that. I've worked for communities that have had a similar requirement, but they look at the whole block face and come up with an average, which hopefully will, you know, takes away that outlier effect that if you just happen to have that one house. The other approach, and this is really where planning commission landed on, and HRA was just utilize our existing standard. We have a thirty-foot setback, just make that the one setback. And then the other option is to have no change. So does that make sense to everyone, what that requirement is? Maybe this one's a little more straightforward. I did create a poll for this. You can kind of guess what that link is. But is there any thoughts or strong opinions?
Council, anything on this? Councilmember Loman?
So on that option one, how do you do that with a cul-de-sac?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, we actually, we, it's complicated with the cul-de-sac because we do have some kind of, when we do our median lot width, we kind of, there are some outliers. But we would just find where that radius is and kind of create that thirty-foot setback on a, or find what that setback is on a, the nearest setback for each house on that cul-de-sac. It, you know, it doesn't create a neat line because it's a cul-de-sac, but you would just be simply, same exercise, finding what those setbacks are for each building on the cul-de-sac and an average.
So for the general public that's watching this, what are the negative impacts of, you know, removing the, you know, these prevailing setbacks?
There's not a ton. There are some situations where we do have a lot of houses that might have a uniform row that are at forty feet. And in this case, I can go to thirty feet now. And so you might have that one house that's sticking out a little bit closer to the street. That would be the impact. Whether it's, you know, it's a visual implication, but not necessarily helping, you know, there's not a whole lot of negative to it, we fill that thirty-foot separation.
Yeah, I've got an example of where this would, you know, this would impact even me personally. And so I just think about that in terms of, you know, if I build something on the front of my property and what the impact is to my neighbor, even though they have a more of a setback in their property, what that means for them. Because the requirement now, I'd have to, you know, get, you know, it'd have to be something to change that. So I just, I just wonder in terms of either from a safety standpoint, if I add on to the front of my house, or if a person adds on to the front of their house, what the implications are. what the implications are, you know, for, you know, even though they, you know, whoever owned the house before that person, let's say they, they own that house and it's setback further, um, I'm just, I'm just concerned about that. So given what I know right now, I need to see more concrete examples of this. I just don't feel comfortable just removing this, because I just think, what are the impacts of those folks who are around you, you know, to your neighbor?
You make a good point, Councilmember Loman, saying you can think of how this would impact you personally, and I think, you know, everything that we're talking about will impact somebody personally. So just something to keep in mind. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My question is, was there any consideration of reducing the, from the 30 feet? And the only reason I bring that up is I know some other communities are looking at reducing that front yard setback in order to allow for some additions onto the front of houses for expansion and things like that. I know in particular, um, Burnsville is looking at that right now and having discussions about the merits of that. I don't know where they're at exactly right now, have to reach out to their council, but, just wondering if that was part of the conversation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, um, we, we didn't really talk about that or get into too much detail. I think the 30 feet has kind of been ingrained for some time now as that, um, minimum setback. I think the bigger issue at hand was the prevailing, but, um, that is something to discuss moving forward potentially.
Counsel, anything else? Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I, oh, sorry, Mayor. Yeah, no, I just was going to follow up quick, if it's okay.
Sure, please.
I, I'm not sure what their current setback was and what they're looking to move it to. I mean, it's, it's perfectly possible that they were at 35, trying to go to 30 or something like that already, so, um, just, uh, it seemed to be something that they felt was important to at least take a look at.
Mm-hmm.
Counsel, anything else? Any other comments on this? I think we can move forward.
Um, this next one was a two-family home approval process. So, um, currently, when we, a two-family home that is looking to be developed, that's within 500 feet of another two-family home, this requires a planned development overlay. So this is a rezoning, it takes a public hearing at Planning Commission and then at council for decision. So this is a lengthy process, um, and obviously that, that's difficult for a developer who's looking at two, two-family homes. When you're looking at two-family home infill development, it's not a big multinational corporation typically, it's, you know, builders that are doing these smaller, um, at-the-edge projects. So any time or risk associated with it makes it more difficult to, to develop. Planning Commission and HRA were split on this, they, they thought that moving it back a level, um, from council, so, um, would, would make sense. About half were in support of having a conditional use permit, which would require a, a public hearing to notify the neighbors, um, recognizing that it does add time, but it, it's a much quicker process, if you're looking at about a month, first about six to eight weeks for a council-level approval. Um, but others thought that, uh, let's just, if we have the standards, let's just follow the standards. Uh, it could improve at the staff level through final site and building plans and kind of normalize that two-family homes are just something that we'd expect. It still continued to have additional standards for our two-family homes, the additional size requirements that, um, we'll discuss here in a minute. But, uh, recognizing that if we have these additional standards, do we need to have that, that public hearing process? I'll open it up there.
Counsel, questions on that? Thoughts? Councilmember DeLassandro?
I actually just have a historical question. When was the last time a two-family home was built in Bloomington?
Mr. Markergood?
Um, Mayor Bocey, Councilmember DeLassandro, we have a few each year on average. Most of them do not come before the city council because their individual approvals kind of scattered. Um, so on average, one or two a year.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The reason I asked the question was, um, you know, if, if, if it's, if we think that it's going to move the needle and we go from two or so a year to 10 or 20 per year as a result of making this change, you know, I generally am, that's, that sounds like a good thing to me in terms of housing stock and availability. But we, I'm just curious if we know whether or not we think that it's going to move the needle to make the change one way or the other. Do you, do you folks have any ideas? Have you, have you had folks tell you that, no, they don't plan to bring these before council because they're too onerous, or is it just a chance for us to maybe fix it and see if it does, you know, move the needle a little bit? Thank you.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember DeLassandro, I, um, personally, anecdotally, from time to time, it does happen when I, I'll talk to someone on the phone who's inquiring about it, and then we tell them this is standard, but, um, to say that it's a huge deterrent, it, it, you know, we don't get a ton of this development to begin with, so it's kind of, that's hard to, hard to judge. Um, part of the history of this, though, um, that I failed to mention was that we, at, at one point, I, I'm not sure when, um, but there was a developer who was kind of buying up property by property and just going, essentially doubling the density of a neighborhood, um, to do two-family home next to two-family home. So this was like a stopgap measure to say, hey, we want to review all of these that are within a certain distance. Um, and so that, that's kind of the history with that, but...
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess just kind of broader, um, on down the line, it would be interesting to have a conversation, I brought this up before, about how we encourage more development like this around some of our neighborhood commercial notes, where we're already trying to encourage, um, that residential density to support hopefully the small businesses that are breathing new life in those corridors. So down the line, I appreciate talking about how we can target some of this into those areas a little bit more. But i- in general, I think if we're going to say that something like these two-family dwellings are an asset to the community, are filling a really critical kind of missing middle-ish part of our little housing stock, I, I like the idea of option two quite a bit, to just normalize the process and say this is a type of housing that we're going to move forward with, as if it was something we're already routinely approving without having to hold, kind of step out of the way to, to hold hearings on them and stuff like that. So if it's something we're looking to encourage, let's treat it just like we treat most other things, so.
Councilmember Coulter? And I see the, the voting is now open.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess one thought that I, I have on this is, I mean, you know, going back to Councilmember DeLassandro's point, um, I actually do not recall that we've, we've had any of these. I don't recall any of these coming before the council, at least my time, uh, in my time here, and it's, it's certainly possible they have, and I'm just not remembering. Um, I guess, I'm, what, where I'm having some difficulty here is a, I mean, essentially a group is two or more duplexes, basically. And it, it feels to me, you know, the decision of, say, two or three duplexes, group, you know, duplexes in a grouping, that's a different decision than if it's, you know, five or six or more, right? And so I, I guess one question I would have would be, you know, could we, could we, and not that there's even land to do this in Bloomington, so maybe this is a moot point anyway, but, you know, could we put some sort of, um, uh, not limit, but sort of threshold at which, you know, after a certain number in a grouping, that it goes to the council level? Because, you know, like I say, two duplexes in a neighborhood is a very different effect than three, four, five, six, or whatever it is. So, um, in, I mean, in general, I'm not, I'm not sure the, I mean, I guess I'm, I sort of don't have a strong preference one way or the other, in the sense that it just seems like such a small number that's, that I've moved forward, that, um, I'm not inclined to, to think it makes a huge difference. Um, but, you know, if that number were to dramatically increase, and in particular if the number within groupings were to be significant, um, I, that just to me is a different equation.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, that, that's a good point. We, we, that's another approach that I don't think we really even considered, was changing that two or more to maybe five or six within 500, or, you know, a different number. Um, I think that, that works, um, to, to prevent that, that issue. The, the only initial concern I have from a staff level is then we have to kind of figure out where those two-family homes are, and it's not always the easiest to identify on the map and kind of go through that exercise, but, um, that's certainly not the worst thing we have to do, so. Um, does anyone else have thoughts on that?
Additional questions, folks?
Mr. Mayor, if I may please? I just, I wanted to just comment, I think, uh, I think what Councilmember Coulter is, is looking at is really interesting. If the purpose of this to begin with was to prevent serial development of, of, of this kind of housing, um, then, you know, putting a stopgap at a certain number makes more sense than to just say you can't do any of it at all, right? And so, um, that's an, an interesting compromise, not that I'm necessarily for any limit at all, but that would be an interesting compromise, it would change the, the, the face of this. So although I already voted, I'd be fine with that option two if that was something that the planning folks thought was a better answer. Yeah. Thank you.
Another possibility for you to consider, as you're looking at options here?
I'm trying to think that through to, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember DeLassandro, because, you know, with this, I mean, it's really just an approval process, so it, it, there's no, nothing that says you can't improve it in the grouping, so, um, maybe that is something we, we talk about at the, the staff level, um, a little more detail. And, um, this next, uh, item, I'll, this is one of those more head nods, um, kind of looking at approach similar to the corner lot, um, discussion. So we do have a larger lot requirement for our, um, two-family homes. Uh, and essentially, um, how we get to that, it would be kind of taking what would be our two single-family lot sizes and subtract what, um, what we're considering here, the, the side yard, because essentially it was a two-family home, but two single homes that are pushed together, right? So you're losing that side yard. So from a staff perspective, for us, it makes sense to take, um, that 78, um, okay, my numbers all jumbled up, sorry, too much math, um, but, uh, taking that, with that, that essentially what we decided on the, the single, the minimum lot size, times it by two, subtract by what that, um, middle side yard would be, which would be 2,600 square feet, to get kind of our, our final. Does that approach work for everyone? Is there any strong objection to that, to get to our two-family home size, or lot size?
Any problem with that, or does that make sense to everybody?
And then our last poll, and kind of last main item, um, for the single-family and two-family home section, is related to minimum home size. So we do have a minimum home size, and we do have a minimum home for two-family home size. Um, in recent years, we kind of changed how we calculated this. It used to be the main floor level, but now we recognize that there's, uh, finished basements, and I'm in a finished basement right now, that is actually living space, so we incorporate that into that minimum home size, um, as well. So this might not be as much of an issue, but we do have that minimum home size, so it does kind of create that cost, minimum cost. Um, so this is one, too, where we're kind of split at the Planning Commission and HRA. Some thought, well, it's really not that hard to get to these minimum home sizes, so it's probably not much of a barrier, but others thought, well, let the market decide on what that minimum home size should be. Um, or, but recognizing that we don't necessarily want tiny homes, we want a full home with a kitchen and foundation that meets minimum, but there are building code standards that they'll have to meet that will kind of make sure that you have an actual permanent home. Um, so it's kind of split here, um, open for discussion, and similar with staff, we didn't have a strong opinion, we, we kind of saw value to both sides, that's not a big barrier, but also market could decide.
Any thoughts on this? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I guess sort of my, my first question is, you know, we, what are we hearing from developers on this? Are we, are we hearing that, that this is a significant barrier to single-family or two-family home development?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, um, not a significant barrier, no. I think the, the market's kind of demanding larger homes to begin with. I mean, average nationwide, it's shrinking a little bit, but it's still much larger than 1,000 square feet, so. If you think about a two-bedroom house with a kitchen and a living room, you'd get pretty close to a, a thousand square feet to begin with.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, even, you know, just thinking about my own home, you know, it's, it's sort of one of those standard ramblers, and including a finished basement, it's well over, uh, 10, 40 square feet. So, um, I mean, you know, again, I, I guess I don't necessarily have a, a significant problem, I, I'm, I'm just not sure what the, the need here really is. Um, the only other question that I would have is how this would relate if we were to reduce lot sizes in the way, in the ways that we've discussed earlier, you know, understanding obviously some of the, the adaptations that have been made, um, what effect that would have on this in terms of, um, you know, like a, a single-family or, um, a single-story, excuse me, home, um, you know, making sure we're not sort of fencing ourselves in by changing one standard and, uh, as it relates to another.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, to Councilmember Coulter's point, um, I, I would expect that this is not a big issue within Bloomington, but it is regionally. Um, there is a lot of interest in building smaller footprint houses, particularly for the senior market, uh, studio homes, uh, things like that, and, I mean, just because we're already almost fully developed, I don't, wouldn't imagine there had been a ton of demand for that within Bloomington, but, you know, you go to a place like Lakeville or Woodbury or something like that, uh, you know, and so I don't see why we wouldn't have that as an option here. There are some developable parcels that, that it might work for within the community, but, uh, this is, uh, that smaller home, smaller lot size is actually a very popular thing that is extremely difficult to build in this region. So, I mean, I think the leadership of Bloomington on this would be excellent, in my opinion.
If not, let's open up the poll, keep this moving.
Well, with that, um, I will turn this over to Sean. Sean will talk about accessory dwelling units, and he'll turn it back to me to talk about, um, another idea that we're talking about, and then we'll, uh, get into the next item, which I am also presenting. Fortunately, you get a little bit more of me.
Very good. Go get a glass of water. Very good. Well, go get a glass of water. Uh Sean, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. Let me um got an item here on accessory dwelling units that's embedded in my some. Let me just share a few slides here to set this up and open up discussion. Um so accessory dwelling units or ADUs, um there was an ordinance that the city adopted back in two thousand nine to allow them. But we've only seen uh two that have been approved since. And uh a couple of years ago, we did make some quick amendments uh to try to introduce more flexibility. So we removed the minimum lot size uh for lots to have an ADU. We clarified some language about ADU size, how that's calculated. So just FYI, they have to be smaller than the primary dwelling. Uh and they can only be up to thirty-three percent of the um bottom floor area. And then we also removed the requirement that uh ADUs uh need additional parking. So standard is that lots that meet our parking requirement can have an ADU. Um lots that don't meet that requirement cannot and and an ADU doesn't create extra parking uh requirement then. So um you know, what is an ADU? It's a little bit easier to explain based on uh what's required of them, what the standards are. Um but generally, there's three types of ADUs detached, attached, or internal to the main structure. And so right now, our our code does not allow detached ADUs. Um attached is allowed, so that's second on the top there. And then um now if it's an interior above level, that would be allowed uh in most cases. The lower-level interior is typically allowed. The the nuance here is if you have a single-family house and then your whole basement is converted, you know, assuming those floor areas are the same, then um that would not be allowed because the ADU has to be smaller. Um above garage here, it's another kind of nuanced situation. Um it's not always allowed because uh the code requires that ADUs share a wall with the um four-seas and living area. So just sharing the wall there with the garage is not enough. Uh and same with garage conversions. So um the issue with that is the parking requirement, the enclosed spaces. So unless you create a new garage elsewhere, you can't convert your existing one. Uh one other note, though, is I I will say most ADU inquiries that we get, um they're able to be accomplished without that ADU approval because they meet just code requirements for single-family dwellings. So uh you know, if you want to convert your basement and uh add a kitchen and bathroom to it, you can typically do so as long as there's not doorway connecting the two. Um the code allows you to have that separate living area um without ADU approval. The benefit of the ADU is where you don't have that um doorway connecting the ADU and primary dwelling, and they each have their separate external um entryways. So it's a little bit more separate living area. So um why are we talking about this? Um so one, we could talk about increasing affordable housing op opportunities. You know, frankly, ADUs are expensive to build. It'd be tough to make them affordable. But it's really about, you know, adding units and creating that um flexibility and options for people. Um ADUs make it easier to downsize and stay in a neighborhood or to have more of a multi-generational household. Um number three here, they could add rental space for additional income streams for people. Uh and then last, you know, just in general, they help add the housing options and address some of the changing needs of of our demographics. So um also uh definitely interested in, you know, minimizing negative impacts of neighborhoods as well. So we do have a variety of standards here. I won't go, you know, one by one through them, but seek to address, you know, potential impacts with congestion, uh impacts on neighbors, and then avoiding, you know, preventing non-residential use of them. But staff has really honed in on a few of the common barriers here that we've found um just through our experience and through other um research nationwide. So prohibiting detached ADUs and limiting the number of occupants in bedrooms can be big barriers. And those two are really specific to the ADU standards and the zoning code. Whereas, you know, the parking requirement Mike touched on, there's really some broader zoning code standards. They do um can be a barrier, you know, for those lots that don't meet our minimum. Um but again, it's it's a broader discussion. And then um a- again, you know, that cost, utility connection, the feasibility of doing that are are really the big barriers with ADUs. Sometimes it can be difficult to find financing for them. So um you know, frankly, even if we didn't have many standards uh on ADUs, it it would still be tough. We still may not see very many because of their cost. So I won't go through one by one. I'm happy to answer questions later. But um you know, many of the concerns about detached ADUs um would are addressed or would be addressed through existing standards for single-family dwellings. Uh just quick in the picture shown, you know, sometimes there's concerns on larger lots that someone might put an ADU, you know, on the far back end of their lot, far away from their house and closer to neighbors. But um that would be a difficult one for the utility connection to just get so much more expensive to have it further away. Um and we we still have the, you know, structure setback requirements, um you know, impervious surface limits that would make it more difficult to place an ADU afar from the main house. Similarly, with occupancy, bedroom limits, um they're largely addressed by existing standards. Um if if we weren't, or yeah, by uh dress existing standards. So um you know, if we did not have a limit, then the International Property Maintenance Code already requires, you know, so much square feet per number of occupants. Um we do require, you know, ADUs have their own cooking, sanitary, sleeping, living facilities. So it's not like people would be cooking out in their yards all the time or uh using outhouses, nothing like that. Um and in many ways, ADUs are 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 kind of similar to a home addition. Um but they're also different in that they um they're different than single-family dwellings in that they're smaller and they're always associated with a a primary dwelling. So we don't just see an ADU on its own. So quick uh city comparison, you know, it's kind of mixed with our neighboring cities, who allows what. Um but in the broader area, a lot of the cities are starting to loosen their standards uh and are starting to allow detached ADUs. Um I've spoken with um you know, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Crystal, Minnetoka, Hip Hopkins, and Stillwater. All are either in the process of remending standards or have already adopted standards. And um a lot of those allow detached ADUs, you know, few have rep- reported issues. And they have noted that they've gotten a fair amount of support from residents uh for ADUs. Um so depending on tonight's direction, then staff would look to do public outreach next, both for, you know, this ADU item and for um the topics Mike has discussed. We we've talked about, you know, creating a let's talk page and resubscribe notices briefing. Um but you know, any changes to ADU standards, they apply really to any and all single-family properties. So it's citywide. So um you know, in that case, some of the uh online engagement is a little easier. Um but we're certainly open to uh any suggestions, opinions that the council has. And then um we'd really like to receive direction then more specifically on whether we should consider allowing detached ADUs. Now just to get initial direction as well as um whether the council would be open to removing a bedroom and occupancy limits. Um planning and HRA commissions were largely in support of these to allow detached, you know, remove the occupancy. They did um recommend keeping that bedroom limit, just noting that ADUs, you know, they're accessory, they're intended to be smaller than that main house. But um you know, at this point, study item, we're certainly open to uh suggestions and anything else you uh recommend as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Let's see, Councilmember Coulter and Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um just a quick question, this uh IPM, this IPM code um in terms of um occupancy space, that that's all, I mean, that's not in city code, am I correct in that?
That's correct, yeah. Our um I believe our state co- building code makes reference to it. Oh, yeah, we adopt it by reference.
So I mean, could that hypothetically, if if we were just to remove the occupancy limit or the bedroom limit, falling on in and just fall back on that, could that hypothetically change? And would then would, I mean, could ADUs be then, you know, in or out of compliance based on? And I'm I guess what I'm what I'm getting is I'm I'm generally speaking, a little bit wary of the idea of saying, well, you know, we'll fall back on this sort of document and then something changes and now we now we sort of have to catch up to it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember. Um it it does make sense. And um I guess my point in in referencing that is that, you know, someone can't create a bedroom that's just like, you know, thirty square feet. I think the minimum for one person is seventy square feet. So you know, there's already limits in place and um now our limits are above and beyond that. And um I guess another side note is we do have a minimum ADU size of three hundred feet and a max of, I think, nine sixty. So um you know, how much of that is bedrooms versus kitchen? I'm not sure it matters so much.
Sure, and I and that that makes sense. And I I guess um that that's more, I guess, that's just sort of the general issue I'm I'm wondering about is is, you know, what uh what effect that would have on standards. I, you know, generally speaking, I think you're right. I think, you know, folks are gonna, ADUs are gonna be designed for a specific purpose and and you know, that's gonna have a a comfortable enough bedroom space and and that sort of thing. Um but I I just want to make sure we're thinking about that sort of thing um as we move forward and any potential standards changes. Um I will just say that um yes, absolutely, and as far as detached ADUs, um you know, of course, let's let's hear what folks have to say. But um I think that just makes a lot of sense. And to be honest, and based on the conversations I've had, I think most folks think of detached ADUs when they think of ADUs. That's, I mean, that's kind of the image that that I think folks have in their heads. So um and most folks are surprised to know that we don't allow them. So um I I think that just makes a ton of sense.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um just a couple of quick items here. Um would doing detached ADUs allow for like a temporary structure uh that somebody could put into the yard as long as it met setbacks and had the bedrooms and the kitchen and things like that? Would you be able to do some type of temporary structure?
Uh Councilmember Nelson, so um I'd say not typically what people call temporary. Um they'd have to be connected to utilities. So um that's usually a barrier. You know, we hear about tiny houses a lot and um inquiries about that. And usually it doesn't meet our ADU because it's not connected to those utilities. And yeah, it has to be set in the ground. So um you know, yeah, I don't think what people consider temporary could be an ADU.
Okay, because I have seen some discussion in the industry about like pods and things that they can come in and you use them for a decade or whatever, and then they go somewhere else when you don't need them. So just wanted to clarify that. Um how does this apply to like, I mean, I I'm assuming in Bloomington, you can't just rent out your basement, even if you had a bedroom down there. Um you wanted an extra roommate. Can you do that? Can you not do that? Um how does that apply?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Nelson. So I don't want to get in trouble with talking about a rental licensing and what's allowed and not allowed. But um uh from what I understand, you know, each house could have a rental license. And um I believe you'd be able to rent it out to um someone else then. So um whether it's an ADU or not, you could rent that out, but as long as you live on that property too.
That's good. I just want to make sure I didn't do anything wrong twenty years ago. So appreciate that. So um i- in general, just, you know, feedback, I think this is a really good thing to look at. Again, I think this is one of those things that people are really trying to be creative on and what they can do with an aging population and what makes sense, you know, and um you know, keep it keeping those families together and and things like that. So this, uh you know, appreciate the creat- creativity, the thought process behind this. Um yeah, I think uh it it's a good conversation to have. So thank you.
I would agree, Councilmember. Good conversation to have. Um and and I'm generally in favor of this. I like these ideas. I like the the notion of a detached ADU. Uh Mr. James, with this, how how would this work with the limited number of structures that you're allowed to have on your property? If you've got a shed in the backyard, can you not have an ADU or is this in addition to or how does that work?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, right, the standard now is you can have two detached um structures from the house. And so, you know, as far as staff has been talking, we've talked about keeping um if we were to allow detached, that it would meet, that it would have to meet our existing single-family standards, you know. Um but I I guess open to suggestions and and right, I guess, with that understanding, yeah, if you had a detached garage and a in a shed that's detached, then you would not be able to have an ADU in that case unless we built in an exception.
I'm also curious how they would work with chicken coops in the backyard, but we're not going to get into that tonight right now either. So um I I same question as before, though, that I had, just considering considering um uh additional structures in the yard, considering setback requirements, considering yard sizes and so on. Do we know, I mean, if we, how many properties in the city of Bloomington would be allowed to have ADUs? You know, when, just curious on that, and I'm sure you don't have that number right now, but it's a it's just a a a point of of detail that I would be helpful to understand this a little bit better. Councilmember Carter?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um I'm I'm definitely open to uh this conversation around detached ADUs. I'm glad that you are um planning for public engagement and outreach around this issue. I think it'll be super helpful to hear from uh residents, you know, where their thinking is at on this. Uh I am supportive of removing the occupancy limit. Uh in doing some research in that table that you provided, it looks like most communities do have the bedroom limit of two. Uh so I guess I'd be I'd be comfortable staying with that if that's the recommendation also from our planning and HRA. Uh but also open to kind of reconsidering that. And then I guess I would just ask the question, you know, if these are important tools for us to increase our housing supply, and especially as we think about um the aging population, are there other things that we can do to incentivize the building of ADUs? Is that something we would want to consider? And I don't know if that'd be through the HRA or or some other kind of um mechanism, but just an idea. I'll put it out there.
Councilmember Alessandro?
I I have a follow-up question to Councilmember Nelson's question. Um it does, does the um, does the idea of a mobile home hookup count as uh, you know, utility?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Alessandro. So um I I mentioned the utility connections as being a requirement, but there's also just the general building requirements that things be uh set in the ground with frost footings. I I'm making the assumption that if whatever ADU standards, they'd have to meet all of those um requirements. And those are our current standards too. So it in in many ways, they need to meet, you know, single-family building requirements. So yeah, any type of like mobile or temporary um structure just um quickly or connected to the utilities would not be allowed.
So so at the risk of sounding like a complete crazy person, what if I wanted a composting toilet?
Yeah, thanks. Um good question. I don't know what the standards are around those. Um I assume we have some requirements uh on plumbing.
I I'm I'm pushing the 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 point just to make sure that, you know, you know, at at some point, you can get yourself caught into a a, you know, um defining yourself to death, right, around some things. death, right, around some things. And so, I just wanted to be sure that we are offering the most flexible options for folks if they want to take this on in order to encourage it. And so, you know, as we think through this, if we, if there are in our code natural barriers to some of those more ingenious options, I would be totally fine with, you know, thinking through them as we go through this process. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember DeLisandro. But to Councilmember Nelson's point, it wasn't so long ago that drop pods were all the rage. And there was a, a recommendation for that, basically pods that you could simply drop in the front, you know, in your driveway, basically, and have people live there. And I know we talked about it here. I remember that conversation at the City Council, and I think the unanimous decision was no. And so, it's, it's interesting. I like the thought of the, the creativity, but, but you're right to, to try and define your way to perfection is, is a dangerous thing because somebody can always come up with a solar, you know, a solar unit and a composting toilet that all of a sudden the drop pods are illegal. Yeah.
Absolutely. Right. Exactly. Well, and, and if you, if you permit me, Mr. Mayor, you know, we've seen a, a several, you know, when we think about affordability, right, we've seen a rash in, in the past decade or so here in the Twin Cities of us taking out our mobile home communities and things like that. Those were very affordable options for, for folks, right? And, and, and so, you know, as we are doing this, we're kind of sort of saying, hey, you know, maybe we made, you know, maybe we should have had more of those kinds of options available to folks all along, right? And so, I want us to think through and make sure that we don't continue to add barriers to what might naturally occur over the course of the coming, you know, twenty or thirty years. And we're reminded of, of what happened before when we said, hey, you know, these smaller format homes didn't, didn't work for us as a suburban area, or even in Minneapolis for that matter, right? And now I think, I, I don't want to presume, but I would think that certain folks might be regretting those decisions because they created housing challenges for people. So, you know, we, be more flexible and more thoughtful about that would be good, I think, just in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lohman?
So, just taking a step back, what, what our community is doing that are, are successful with, with putting in ADUs, you know, what's the, the city we would look to and say, hey, they've done a hundred ADUs, you know, last year or the last couple, over the last couple of years? What, what are they doing? What are their policies like?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Lohman. So, you know, Minneapolis notably has the most ADUs in the area. And part of it's just the demand. You know, there's, the density is, is more common up there. And they've removed standards. So, I know owner occupancy is a standard that was removed recently. And simply, you know, the, the owner of the property doesn't need to live in the house or the ADU. They can rent out both separately. So, I, I think cities are, are removing more and more the standards that are, have been barriers. I don't know if there's any one standard that really gets in the way. I kind of echo Councilmember Coulter's comments. I think a lot of people, when they think of ADUs, they think of the detached variety. So, I, I think that would be a step in, in the right direction to allowing more. But yeah, I, I think in general, it seems like the calls we get, there's, you know, just the variety of standards. There's always one of them that will prohibit someone from doing an ADU.
And, and if I could just, Councilmember Lohman, I mean, on, on the chart that was provided, in, in addition to the one hundred and twenty or whatever in Minneapolis, and then the thirty in Minnetaka, which I'm guessing a good chunk are probably boathouses.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
But, but beyond that, there's, all the cities listed, I don't see, you know, maybe ten, no more than a dozen. So, I think there, there, there's probably a lot of city councils in the same position that we are that are looking at possibilities to expand but don't necessarily have that template in front of them as to help us to do it.
Yeah, I mean, kind of going back, you know, Mayor, to what, what Councilmember Carter said, you know, what can we incentivize, you know, to kind of, I mean, do we, I mean, do we want to, you know, be like Minneapolis, remove all the standards and go down that route? And, and just, you know, we're going to be the ADU, you know, center like they're doing? Or, or is there some other kind of incentive that we can do beyond, you know, beyond what we've got here listed? So, I guess that's sort of where, where I'm kind of, kind of driving at. So.
Understood. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just quick follow-up here in terms of rental versus ownership. But is there any way to structure these where somebody could purchase the ADU as opposed to renting it? Two options in my mind. One, if you had kids that were younger that wanted to get some equity and build homeownership, which I think is an important thing for us. The second thing would be for older people that were going to maybe move in with their kids, but into an ADU and, but had the financial means to maybe sell that larger house and buy a portion of these. But, you know, with our lot sizes and platting requirements and all that, I don't know how you do that. Is there, is, is there a simple way to do that where you could make some of these ADUs an ownership opportunity?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Nelson. So, I, I think there's potential where someone could own an ADU and say, rent out their main house. I'd have to double-check our standards to see if that would be a barrier. It, it's trickier though where you want to own an ADU separately from a house. Because as you mentioned, the lot sizes, you're, I've seen on, out on the West Coast, you get examples of condo plats for an ADU. But, you know, where that happens, we're kind of butting into, you know, the, the minimum lot sizes, or even our two-family standards. So, it might make more sense to, to look at those instead of like ADUs as an ownership option.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if there's anything you can do, because I just, I, you know, frankly, think it'd be a great opportunity for, for young children to buy and grow equity in something. And, you know, we've talked a number of times for that type of ability to build wealth within families. I don't know how popular it would be, or if I'm the only crazy person that would do that. So, um, so, yeah, I appreciate, appreciate the answer.
Council, any additional comments or questions on this? Mr. James, do you have enough to move forward on this?
Yeah, I think so. I'm generally hearing that we're open to a lot of these. I think the sentiments are pretty similar to planning commission, HRA commission. So, I'm next to move forward with that public outreach. So, thank you.
Very good. Yep. I'll be, I'll be curious to hear what public input you get as you put this out there. Be curious to hear what the community discussion is.
I think Mr. Palermo just has a couple of slides or.
Councilmember Nelson, did you have one more thing? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask?
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Just, just a, a recommendation on, on outreach. I think, you know, let's talk Bloomington and all is great. And of course, we can get some information demographically about like the zip codes that people are responding to and everything. But this feels like something that on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis, not that we know what those things are, but on a geographical area, it would be really interesting, I think, to try to do some engagement. I have a feeling we'll see very, very different perspectives depending upon where you live and, and what your, you know, lifestyle is in your neighborhood and things like that. And, and so, I'd encourage staff to, to be hyper-local on this particular discussion item.
Very good point. Now, do you have a question?
Sorry, Mayor. I actually do have something now, if, if that's okay.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. Councilmember DeLisandro reminded me of something. But in terms of outreach and things like that on, on, you know, all of these issues that we've talked about, I think staff has done a great job talking with a number of various groups. But the one group I want to just make sure that they may be including in the conversation is the building and development community, and find out what barriers they're actually running into in Bloomington specifically, and, and how we might help, or, you know, some of the ideas we throw out. I mean, is there even a market for them? Or are we just barking up the wrong tree there? Or, you know, what other things are they seeing there? So, but, I mean, it sounds like you guys are really comprehensive in, in talking to a wide range of people. That's just one that I would recommend talking to. And obviously, if there's anything I can do to help with that, please just let me know.
Good point, Councilmember. All right, are we back to Mr. Pal, Palermo? Mr. Palermo? There he is. Okay, sharing very, very good. Mike, I think you're muted.
Thank you. I had it muted on my phone.
Two years into this darn thing, it's still happening. I know.
Double muted, just for, to be careful. But, yeah, so, following up, this is something, cluster development was something that we've kind of were exploring with this project as well. And we're, all we're looking for tonight is just guidance on whether we should continue to explore this and bring this back in a further study session. But being to Councilmember DeLisandro's point, where we've kind of lost our mobile homes, what cluster development, a good way to think about it is, small units, they're permanent structures, but they're on like a common lot. So, it could be a single or two or three single-family lots combined to create this kind of small unit. We can see in the picture here. But think of it similar to like a mobile home requirement. But our mobile home requirement, we require five acres, which to gather that much land to do something like this is very difficult. So, this is really kind of small, maybe three, four units. And, you know, those are standards to discuss later. But the point of it really is to get it deeply affordable. It's not necessarily an ownership opportunity as much as it is to provide deeply affordable housing. There's different models to it. Sometimes you have a provider there. But as you can imagine, it's, it's a high utilization of land. It is much denser than a single-family neighborhood, but they're typically found in, well, all sorts of neighborhoods. But we're, we're expecting some single-family neighborhoods to be in a single-family neighborhood. So, because it, it is kind of deeply affordable, and as you move up in income, you, you're likely might see more turnover as people move into higher levels of housing. So, Minneapolis recently passed this a couple of years ago. They have kind of a pretty good framework to kind of build off of where they allow it. This would require a conditional use permit. So, having that oversight, we would have things like minimum site requirements. We would have the setback requirements similar to, as Sean was saying with ADUs, we'd have kind of setback requirements, setback requirements similar to our single-family standards. Occupancy requirements are subject to building code because these are permanent structures. And if there is an operator, they have some sort of management plan to address potential externalities or issues that could happen. And St. Paul also recently just passed this about, not too long ago, I just saw it in the news. So, there is growing demand in the Twin Cities to do this. So, developers are looking to do this, understanding that this can get really at those affordable, deeply affordable units, provide a pathway. A lot of times you see the model of a veteran's village. Many of those are out there. So, there's still lots of things for us to consider. I'm not asking you to, to come up with any recommendations right now, but we're just looking for input from council on this, something that they'd be interested in staff to continue, continue to explore.
Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I guess a, a quick question and then a comment. So, in, for units that don't have bathroom or, or kitchen amenities included in them, are we seeing these developments are, are they connected to those facilities via a walkway? Or are people having to walk outside to go to their kitchen and the bathroom?
So, in some cases, Councilmember Martin, you would have maybe like a common building that the kitchen would be provided in, and there might be bathroom facilities in there. Sometimes the kitchens and bathrooms are included in it, or for a cost-saving measure, you might have that common building. So, Minneapolis, I believe, has a requirement that that common building then has to, there's a, a limit and distance that they can be, the units can be from that common building to recognize that you are going outside. And it's not the night, the best situation.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And, and this is something that, that kind of crossed my mind when we were talking about rooming houses potentially. And I was a little bit uncomfortable about not having those amenities in the units, even when it was one building. I, I could see west where things like bungalow courts are a lot more popular and have been for a long time. It's not so tough. But, I mean, some of the nights we've had recently, I can't imagine asking somebody to go outside to, to do something basic. So, I, I, I guess in terms of the options you've put up here, as we're dipping our toes in, I'd be interested in option two on a units per acre maximum, and curious what that comes back as. And then most likely option two for the second half as well. But I'll, I'm looking forward to learning more, but I'll, I'd be deeply uncomfortable without having bathrooms and kitchen in any of these areas.
Other comments on this, Council? I mean, from my perspective, I think it's worth considering, continuing to consider, just so we have a, a variety of options, I think, in front of us. And if we decide not to go this direction at the next cut or with a bit more information, I could understand that, you know, Councilmembers, Councilmember Martin's comments are, are ones that I would consider to be important. But, I don't know. So, the more, the more we know, I think the more, the better we'll be able to make the decision.
Sounds good.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
I, thank you, Mayor. So, this, this was exactly in line with the kind of comment I made earlier when I said, hey, you could have, you know, the homes, and then you have like a separate area for parking in, in, in your impervious space. So, obviously, I was without remembering that this was coming up until I saw it. It was obviously on my mind. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to that. I think, I think the other area of exploration, and I'll, I'll echo Councilmember Martin's comments earlier about our commercial nodes. So, one of the, one of the big items that was of concern, if, if you recall some of the feedback for some of the development, we were interested in doing, say, along Penn Avenue, was that the neighborhood transitions are oftentimes very challenging, right? So, you go from a, a fairly high-density oriented commercial space, and then there are these homes that were right there that people have lived in for, you know, forty years or so. One of the things I'm intrigued by with this kind of development is that the format of those houses, especially in the picture that we saw, for example, very much are more reminiscent of the, of the style of the community and its single-family attributes, right? And so, you, you enable density in a way that doesn't necessarily change the landscape or the, or the, you know, the front face of the, of the, of the community, which will help a lot as we think about how going from, say, Lindell Avenue and, you know, Ninety-Fourth, where we have a cluster back into those neighborhoods, which is around where I live, or if you're thinking about how the South Loop and Cedar Avenue transition so quickly from that developed space and then into, into a much more residential area. So, you know, tho, those kinds of thoughts are also valuable just from an overall urban planning perspective, I think. Thanks.
Council, any additional questions, comments? I would assume the planning staff has plenty to chew on now. On that topic.
This was helpful.
On that topic, yes. So, with that behind us, I'm going to move on to, and call item eight point eight, which is the multifamily parking standards update, and turn it right back over to Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll run through this fairly quickly. Planning Commission and HRA, they met on this as well during that joint meeting. And they were pretty much in support of all of this. They didn't have any issues. And so, again, I'll be looking for just more of a head nod. Do you agree with this? And we can then move it more into, back to ordinance. But we studied our multifamily parking requirements, and we kind of had some overarching goals for these requirements. One, to simplify it for developers. Two, to right-size what is that parking requirement should be. And three, to continue to provide flexibility, understanding that each situation is unique. So, to give you a little background of our existing code, we require parking per bedroom. So, if we have a one-bedroom unit, they're required to have one point eight parking spaces, two-bedroom, two-point-two, and so forth. We also require additional space for a community room, which is unique to Bloomington. And then we also have EV charger requirements, which is a newer requirement. But we also provide flexibility measures. So, as you've noticed lately with our opportunity housing ordinance, we hit a lot of requests to reduce because they're providing affordable housing units. And so, we kind of have these different ratios available. But we also have proof of parking, so you don't necessarily have to build it. have to build it. You may provide that proof of requir- parking requirement. Or shared parking, you're sharing with the youth that has a different peak, uh, demand. We allow for travel demand management plans. So, um, these are things that the, uh, property owner can do to encourage less car dependency. Um, if you're near transit, we allow with a parking study to reduce, um, and with our plan development process, which is also where we see quite a few reductions, again, requiring a parking study. So in many cases, we require a study to prove that what they're proposing is gonna, gonna be okay. And it gives us a little more discretion than, say, the OHO, which is kind of a little bit more baked in. So the first option, or issue is really to simplify the code. So the bedroom count, it's good because it's more precise for actual demand. When you think of two-bedroom unit, you're gonna have more demand than a one-bedroom unit. Um, but it can impact design a little bit because developers, even up until the last minute, they're shifting how many bedrooms, or they're finding space in the building to do things. So moving to a per-unit basis rather than per-bedroom is a little bit easier as they're doing their calculations. And it is pretty uncommon. Shakopee is the only other city out of the 12 I've reviewed that have a similar requirement. Um, so we're pretty unique that we have this. And similarly, our party room requirement is also unique. Um, no one else in the metro has that. So we're recommending to move to a per-unit ratio, consistent with our, our neighbors and most of the metro, um, because it's easier to design. While it is less precise, you know, if you have a lot of smaller units, you might end up providing a little bit more parking than if you have a lot, um, three-bedroom units, you're going to be providing a little less parking than we would have. Um, but ultimately, we'll kind of hopefully, it'll wa- end up in the wash because we'll be kind of honing in in the next session. So is everyone okay with that approach, moving to a per-unit rather than per-bedroom? Um, maybe this would be a situation where someone would speak up and if they oppose that?
Anyone not like the idea of a per-unit ratio as opposed to the per-bedroom ratio that we currently use? Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, if I'm the only one, just keep moving. Uh, I'm just curious about the history, um, of why we are so unique.
Mr. Palermo, any, any information as to why we adopted that in the first place?
That's a good question. I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, it's not unheard of to have this type of ratio. Um, but it, at overtime, I, I think we've, we're probably, people have updated, and they've updated differently. I don't have any more specifics on how we got to that. Maybe Glenn might, but unfortunately, I don't.
Mr. Markergard, any idea why we ended up with, uh, per-bedroom as opposed to a per-unit ratio?
Uh, Mayor Bosie, Councilmembers, it, it, I believe, was just trying to be more precise about, uh, parking demand, recognizing that a, a one-bedroom or efficiency unit, on average, has less demand than, say, a three-bedroom unit. Uh, less likelihood to have two or more drivers in a, in one household.
So I guess, when I look at this, I mean, I, I kind of, in my thinking of this, really the way to go would be, I don't necessarily want to be like everybody else. I want to do what's best for the, you know, for, you know, builders or, or for our residents generally. And so when I think about this, I, either you just remove the standard completely, you know, like Minneapolis has done. We don't worry about parking. That's just, you got to deal with that yourself. Uh, or the market bears what needs to happen. Uh, or you kind of stick with a more precise model like this, um, and reduce the, uh, the precision in terms of what you require, uh, for the model that we have now. So that, that's just my, my way of thinking, but maybe I'm just the only person thinking that way, so.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I mean, you know, to that point, you know, I guess I would put myself sort of in, in the camp, and I don't know if, I, I try not to speak for others, and I don't know if this is what Councilmember Lohman was saying, but, um, I, I am growing in increasingly unsure of the need for parking minimums in, in general, particularly when it comes to multifamily housing. And so, um, I mean, I, you know, I guess to, to that extent, maybe this is sort of a, a moot conversation in that sense. But, um, you know, I, I, I think if we are going to have a, a, um, a parking minimum, that this probably does make more sense. Um, but I guess I, this just seemed like an appropriate time to say that I, I'm not necessarily sure that we do need such a minimum, and we can talk about that at some point, too, if we want.
And that might transition a little bit into kind of the next. If we move to a single number, what should that number be? What ratio that should be? Um, currently, we require, on average, about two spaces per unit. And I, looking at the last 10 years of our, our development applications, it ended up being about two units per unit. Um, however, um, we, we received lots of reductions. You saw all those flexibility measures. And so while that's the required per unit, the actual approved is more closer to 1.6. And since the OHO was approved in 2019, that actual approved number is closer to about 1.45, about 30% less than that two spaces, that's the requirement. It's, when you look at our peer cities, they're kind of all over the board. Um, I know this is actually out of date, um, it might be out of date. I know Edina was looking at reducing theirs. They're also studying theirs, so I'm not exactly sure where they are in that process. Um, but it ranges from 2.5 in Brooklyn Park to one in St. Louis Park. Um, so it, it, quite a wide range that is out there. Richfield, um, 1.25 or 1.5. Um, it can, again, it can vary. And while this tells us something, that last slide just explained, we have lots of flexibility. So what we require is not necessarily what's being approved. So what other cities are requiring are also not necessarily what they approve because they also provide similar reductions and, and available. So in practice, you know, we're close to 1.75 units, uh, spaces per unit. It's kind of just a recap of that previous slide. Um, so we're recommending 1.8 spaces. It's pretty consistent with what it's been in the last 10 years of actually being approved. So we recognize that there, we will continue to have those flexibility measures that, you know, if you're close to transit, if you are providing affordable housing units, if you're, um, doing shared parking or whatnot, you're, you're able to reduce under those site specifics that allow you to capitalize on that. Um, one, um, not issue, but thing that might come up is that because we have now kind of a, this would be a lower requirement, we may potentially get more fee and lieu projects under the OHO because it's less of a barrier to provide so many spaces. Maybe they'll, maybe we'll be code-compliant in those spaces. Um, uh, and they, they don't need that parking reduction, but they might do that fee and lieu option, which is not necessarily a bad thing. That provides money for the HRA. So, uh, one thing to consider. Um, we did look at the covered parking requirements, and this is one where, as, doing parking counts and talking with, uh, property managers, they really kind of liked the one-per-unit requirement. There's a high utilization. Um, we didn't get a lot of pushback, um, from developers that this is hard to accomplish. Um, and we do have some flexibility in that through the OHO already, if it does become a problem. So we, we were still, uh, moving forward with that recommend, requirement. And most of our peer cities also have that requirement as well. So, um, how do people feel about moving to 1.8 as the ratio, um, as we hone in?
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess honestly, I would be open to considering removing the parking minimums, and I think especially around, um, transit, transit-oriented areas. And so I guess I, I'm, I am comfortable with reducing the parking requirement, and I'm, and I'm further open to just, um, removing the parking minimum requirements.
And I will say, um, if I can jump in real quick, Mr. Mayor, um, the Planning Commission and HRA, um, they were interested in going lower than 1.8, but, um, right now, a lot of our properties that have that kind of lower, uh, parking requirement, they're not, they're under the OHO. They are not up and running yet. So when I did parking counts, it was hard to really, you know, they're not open. So I, I can't use that as a data point as to what the actual parking demand is. So I went out there, and at one point, it was pretty consistent with what I saw, but, you know, it is one of those you build it, they will come type situations. Um, but they, understanding that, they were, they were comfortable with starting this, and then as these newer projects come in in the next year or so, Lindell Flats being kind of that first OHO project that just opened in, uh, January here, we'll have a little bit more data on what that new demand is of some of these higher densities, and what those impacts and externalities might be. So I just want to put that out there, but.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and yeah, this segues nicely into the, the previous comments that I made. Um, I, you know, I guess I, I personally, I, I, I'm saying this knowing I don't have the data to back this up. I will preface that with this. I think we could go lower than 1.8 spaces. Um, is, am I correct in assuming that that number was just chosen because that was the, the, um, the per, per one-bedroom number?
No, actually, that, uh, Councilmember Coulter, that was chosen because, um, I went and did parking counts, and that's kind of what I was seeing as the actual requirement, uh, actual need, um, in discussing with developers, um, what, what actual demand is. Um, but also recognizing that we do allow flexibility to go lower than that. I mean, 1.8 is kind of a middle. Some had higher and some were lower, and, you know, each situation is unique. So that, that's where that flexibility comes in, recognizing that this is a base, this is a starting spot, and if situations warrant, you can go lower than that.
Sure, sure. Thank you. I just, looking at this, this chart that you, that's included in the pack, and obviously recognizing that, that a number of these are not, are not, you know, up and running, as you say, um, I, I counted 11 of the 16 had a lower parking ratio than 1.8. And, um, in fact, eight of the 16 had, had 1.5 or less. Um, and that's, I mean, you, you know, you do the math here, and that's, that's not an insignificant number of spaces, even, you know. I mean, even in a 50, in a 50-unit complex, I mean, even the difference between 1.7 and 1.8, that's five parking spots, right? So, um, I, I think that is something that we, we could probably shoot for. I think, you know, again, to the point that I made earlier when we were discussing the, the Sustainability Commission work plan, um, there are obviously a number of sort of policy perspectives that we take into can, into consideration when we're talking about something like this. But I do think one of them should be what, you know, what can we do to sort of, um, in, how do I want to phrase this? Encourage folks to use cars less, I guess is the way I will put it. And I, I think this is, this is one of those options. Um, so I, you know, I will put it sort of to the, the rest of the council. If there's a desire to get really hard data on this, um, before we move forward, you know, I can, I can understand that. Um, I, you know, I, I need to think if I'm even comfortable supporting that 1.8 number, to be honest with you. Just, you know, based on, on the trends that we have seen and, and what I have experienced, um, and some of the other goals that we have, uh, that involve this kind of multifamily development, um, I, I would, I'm, I'm going to need more information to justify 1.8.
Councilmember Lohman?
Think, uh, through what Coulter, uh, put it well. I guess that's, I'd like to see this, uh, what happens when we do zero? What, what's the, the impact of that? And then, I, I guess I'd rather start at zero and then work my way backwards and, and see where that, where that, that appropriate number is, uh, for this. Because I just think from a long-term perspective, um, we're going to see a lot of change around these multi-units. And when we, we, we talk about sustainability, you know, you know, are we going to get serious about this? And so, um, I, I think it's worth at least asking the questions and then figuring out what the drawbacks are from doing that, and then work your way back to wherever that comfortable number, uh, is. Um, and then I'd also like to know what the impact would be, you know, to our overall programs. I know this is a major portion of that program. Is it true to be able to get a little bit of, uh, support on your, uh, you know, on your, on your parking requirements, on those space requirements? So, um, I'd be interested, you know, where else would, would we go then with that? Does that make it a little less attractive, uh, uh, to, to do that? But I, I certainly think we need to be, uh, I think we need to be bold, and I think we need to think about this, this stuff, and just be sure that we're not just kind of cutting it in between. You know, I think it's a good where we're at, but I think we should take the next step of going, uh, to, to be a little more on the, on the cutting edge of this, so.
I, I, I agree with you, Councilmember Lohman. You, you know me and bold. I'm, I'm big on bold. Um, my, I, I have serious reservations about starting at zero and working our way up. And I look at just, um, uh, the Indigo and the Fenley, in the last few years, those opening with 400 units, even if you think, even if there's a quarter of them have one car, there's an extra 200 cars, where would they park in the South Loop area without parking required there? I mean, there, there simply isn't, there, there isn't street area out there.
Well, I'm thinking back to our, uh, Mayor, I'm thinking back to our, our conversation earlier about our strategic, uh, priorities, about being bold, or whatever word that we utilized.
Agreed, agreed. And I agree, I agree long-term, an admirable goal long-term, I think, but to live in the, uh, in the present, and to think about what potential residents would need in the here and now. Uh, I would be very hesitant to, to go down to zero. I mean, I could see being less than 1.8, to Councilmember Coulter's point. Um, but I, uh, and, and I have seen, and we all have seen, all you'd have to do is drive in any of the Minneapolis neighborhoods with, with no parking required there. It, it's, it's very difficult, even the limited parking that's required in some of the, um, in some of the neighborhoods. Um, just moving a, a child into an apartment at 36th and Garfield, and it was basically one, one lane down the middle of the street because of the, uh, the, the, the snowplowing realities and the, um, and the car parked, parking realities. And so, um, we, we need to, we need to think very carefully to think about this.
I'm certainly with you on that. But I think we've got to challenge both, both sides of the, of the house, though. Uh, we talk about being environmentally sustainable, and then we also, uh, talk about being affordable. And so those, that's where I'm, I, I want, I'd like to kind of start lower and work our way backwards to where the right number is for us presently today. I don't think I'd be saying anything different than what Councilman Coulter is saying.
Councilmember DeLaSandro?
I have a quick question, and, uh, but as someone who has lost more than one driver-side mirror in Minneapolis, I completely understand your point, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, quick question on the covered parking unit. Are you seeing, um, most of those being, resulting in parking garages or ramps, uh, and are they underneath the, the buildings or adjacent to them most often? I'm just kind of curious what covered parking ends up looking like.
Mr. Palermo?
Uh, Councilmember DeLaSandro, yeah, they typically, in new development, they're kind of underground, under the building. That's typically where we see them. Um, you, you could do garages or, or ramps are the other potential way to do that. But we typically, um, the scale that we see, you know, if you get too big, then you can't do it unnecessarily under the building footprint. So a ramp might be a better option there. Um, but, um, that's typically what we see, it's under the building.
Sure. The, the reason I ask this, generally speaking, um, would be more supportive of, of requirements there, just because it creates, um, dense parking areas, and you don't end up with using a lot more land for open parking. So I think that that's a good thing. Um, so I, I would definitely want us to think about encouraging that, or maybe all of it has to be covered, just so that you force into a certain, um, you know, format or whatever as an idea. Um, but the, the other thing I want to make mention of then is just a comment is, um, and, and I, I don't, you know, I, I don't disagree with anybody saying that on an environmental bent, we have to think about this. But you can't just take away people's parking without giving them the alternative modes of transportation that they need to do what they need to do, right? And unless we come up with a comprehensive plan to offer And, um, unless we come up with a comprehensive plan to offer that in a stable and consistent way, um, you know, we are where we are and we're left with what we're left with. And so I want to be sensitive to the fact that, um, these changes should come with, uh, with, you know, in, in alignment with, uh, or maybe, you know, triggered when such and such thing also happens that enables something for us, you know, or in residential areas as Councilmember Carter mentioned, where we know transit is readily already available and that kind of thing to, to, to kind of ease the burden, uh, of folks, um, so that , uh, we don't have that situation. I, you know, I think even when we're talking about the former parking conversations we had earlier, it's, it's, you know, something to think about, right? You know, you have four people living in a, in a house, there's likely four cars in the middle of our neighborhoods these days. There's just not a way around that at this moment. So, thank you.
Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I agree with, with the comments that, that Councilmember Delisandro just made. I think, um, you know, that is, that is something that, that we need to keep in mind. And I, I think, um, I mean, you, you all know me, you know, I'm not always, uh, one to say that the market should, should drive everything we do. Um, but I, I think this is sort of one way that, that we can show that governments are our market actors, right? That we have the power to make, make choices that affect directions that, that the market in the sort of the broadest sense goes. Um, and, and that actually brings me to the point that I, I was originally going to make, which is, you know, why I am comfortable going with a, a lower, um, a lower number. I'm, I'm not sure starting at zero is, is, and going up from there is the best approach. Um, I, you know, I, I think the better approach would be to see, to see, you know, where we are now and, and kind of where we could be. Um, but I, I mean, I think there, you know, the reality is that, you know, part of the challenge Minneapolis has with, with some of the, the, at least in, in my experience, with some of the, the apartment complexes they've had, is that they are, um, that they are fitting new rules onto existing, uh, existing, uh, multifamily housing. And, and, you know, being that this would cover new development, um, you know, I, I think again, going to the, to the point that I was just making, um, you know, developers are, they're going to want people to move into apartments, right? They're going to want people to, to rent these places. And so there, there, I, I would think, and you know, there are any developers in the audience, they can, they can correct me, I would think they would want to make sure that there is enough parking, um, so that, you know, that, that their residents are adequately served, that, I mean, that's, that's something folks are going to be thinking about. Um, so I, I would think that that is something that, that, um, in this case, we, we could sort of have a, a bit of a give and take between, um, our, you know, the city requirements and, and market demand. And so that's why, that's why I think this is a place where we can, um, maybe think a, a little more, um, a little more, uh, think, think in terms of being a little more innovative, uh, rather than just kind of where we are right now.
Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was going to make very similar comments. Um, I think several times this evening I heard, you know, um, let the market respond or, you know, see the market demands. And so I guess I was curious from a staff perspective, given their experience working on this issue for many years, you know, how true is that when a developer decides they're going to build an apartment complex and when they're making decisions around parking, assuming we had no, we had no minimums? You know, how much is that a factor, um, in terms of, you know, like customer demand? How much is it, how much of that is a factor when they're deciding how many parking spots to put, uh, in their development project? And so I guess in my mind, when I was thinking about, you know, eliminating the minimums, I was like, well, I mean, the market should respond, right? If there's a demand for parking, they should, they'll want to build parking so that they can, um, you know, entice people to come and live in the buildings that they're building. But maybe it's, doesn't work that way. I, I, you know, I, I guess I'd be interested to hear from staff, uh, based on what they see.
Mr. Market Guard, Mr. Palermo, what do you think?
Uh, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Carter, um, I guess one anecdote, we've seen a lot of multifamily, uh, projects recently where our code kind of sets the, the level up here and then they do that parking study and the parking study supports something a lot lower. And then the developer kind of wrestles with that and they come in somewhere in the middle. So staff has said, you know, we can support what the parking study supports, uh, but they think about it and decide that either for leasing or for the lender support or, uh, some other factor that they're not comfortable going that low. So we, we do see developers going above the minimum, um, in terms of the, the minimum, uh, based on the flexibility that we would support. Not in all cases, some do go down all the way to that minimum, but we have had several that are above that.
Thank you, that's really helpful.
Yeah, and I might add that going through this and working with the property managers and talking to developers, they have a different idea of, you know, the managers there every day seeing it versus the developer who doesn't necessarily always see that. So I think they have a different number in their heads too. So there, there is a little fuzziness to it. And I do want to reiterate that this base level assumes that there'll be, as you've noticed, everyone will be getting some sort of flexibility measure. Um, so while it is 1.8, you know, our number before was 2.0 and reality was 1.7. So this 1.8 in reality is going to be something different, taking into account our, our O H O, our, um, other planned development, parking studies, other ways to get below that. And when we have that kind of proof with the parking study, we are generally supportive of that.
Thank you for that reminder. Um, so I am, I am comfortable moving forward with the staff's recommendation. And I do think it is good to still have those O H O incentives, um, and opportunities to, um, to, to provide those to developers, um, in exchange for some more affordable units. So there is a benefit there.
Thank you. Others, counsel?
So what, uh, what nodding number can we agree on? The, uh, the staff is at 1.8. Um, I think there was discussion of being lower than that based on some of the, the chart that we looked at. There was, and I'm, I'm open for suggestion here. Is 1.5, 1.8, what do we think is the appropriate number to? And again, this isn't, we're not taking a vote on this. This isn't set in stone. This is just the staff recommendation to, to consider continuing.
Mr. Mayor, um, if I may interject too, I think, um, what the planning commission was comfortable with was starting here and then continue to do parking counts as some of these newer properties that have, are closer, you know, we have ones approved here with 1.3 and 1.5 and then we can actually see what those impacts actually are, um, if they are causing problems or not. Um, you come back in a year and kind of refine the number if needed as well. Just throw that out there.
Which sounds like a reasonable approach. We do have, we've got some test cases coming online here shortly that we can learn a lot from.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, sorry, Mike, just a quick process question. Is, is the thought, I, I think this is what you meant to say and I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. The thought is that you would come back and we would change the, the city code standards that the, the minimum would be 1.8 and then we would see how things go and then potentially come back with another change?
Yep.
Okay, rather than, this is where the conversation's, and then, okay.
It's easier to go a little bit more down than to go to one and then scale that, you know, and then go back up to 1.5. So it's easier to ramp down rather than.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was, I was understanding the process correctly. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if there was any consideration of just using the parking study as opposed to a one-size-fits-all number? Um, or would this allow people to avoid that parking study and save some money in that way?
Yep. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Yeah, and not every situation do we get a parking study. We do, I think we had three in the last 10 years that were code complying. Um, and there, there are some developers that just would rather go that route rather than to seek flexibility. Um, so this gives them an avenue in that direction.
All right. If, if we can get a nodding yes on, on 1.8 with the understanding that we're going to continue to look at this and use the, uh, buildings coming online this year or within the next 18 months or so as kind of test cases and to see if we can learn more about this, uh, but knowing full well that we've got a, a disparate group of opinions here as to which direction to go in. I think that's a good thing, uh, because it's, it's good debate on this. But if we could start here and, and work our way and give staff a direction, I think we'd be in a good position here. Everybody okay with that?
Works.
Mr. Palermo, anything else from us?
Um, one more thing I want to throw into the mix and this kind of gets, I think Councilmember Carter, uh, mentioned this and maybe some of you as well. Um, how do we encourage more around the, the transit development? So we currently have under the O H O two, um, standard reductions. You get a reduction or if you're in a designated transit area, but, um, we're thinking it makes more sense to have kind of a third that's maybe, uh, we would call kind of fixed transit or higher frequency transit. You know, the fixed routes have stations or 98th Street or Orange Line that just came online and Pan American or our light rail. These are fixed stations, they're not moving. These are lines that operate at a high frequency every 15 minutes or 30 minutes and they run, operate 24/7 in most cases. So, uh, it makes sense that this would have less car dependency. So adding a third tier in there, are people, are you comfortable with adding that kind of another gradation in there, understanding that those really should deserve the highest reduction?
Personally, I think that makes sense. I think, I, I think we do best when we don't have hard and fast rules. I think to, to make sure that we take into account different circumstances and different situations, I think makes, makes very good sense, especially as we're talking about things like this.
Um, with that, that's what I had, so.
Well, very good. Thank you, Mr. Palermo. We haven't seen this much of you in two years, I don't think, so.
It's been a while, yes.
It has.
But, uh, you'll be seeing a lot more with, uh, when I come back with these and some other items shortly. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks much. Mr. Market Guard, thank you for your help as well.
Thank you, counsel.
Good discussion, counsel. Two good items there, very interesting, future-looking, uh, big picture kind of discussions and that, well done. Thank you for that. Item 8.9 on our agenda, our final agenda item, is the City Council Policy and Issue Update. Mr. Sable?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, two items for, uh, to note, uh, the city manager did select Dr. Booker T. Hodges to be the next police chief for the city of Bloomington. Uh, very exciting, uh, opportunity for the community, um, and for obviously Booker Hodges to join our team. I did want to, on behalf of the city manager, I did want to thank, um, uh, Chief Hartley for his work in, uh, leading this department during this time. He's been, uh, an incredible resource for not only Booker, but for the department and for the organization and, and we, um, really appreciate the, the service that he has provided. Uh, Dr. Hodges is scheduled to start on April 4th and so we look forward to having that, uh, an opportunity to have some, uh, transition together in transition time. And so a really exciting opportunity for the, for the community and, and to be part of the process and to, to see what, such a terrific candidate and just really excited about, uh, what the future holds for the Bloomington Police Department. Uh, the other item I did want to mention is tomorrow is the release of redistricting maps. Um, so, um, political junkies around the world will be furiously studying, uh, which street and why and what the legislative redistricting maps will, uh, play out. Uh, I did want to make a note that in the one weekly, there was an update provided and then we will provide another update on the 18th. And then there will be an introductory item on the 28th of February with a summary of the congressional legislative map changes and kind of an overview of some of our redistricting requirements. Um, just want to let you know that we are obligated by the end of this month, or I'm sorry, the end of March to have a council approval of redistricted council districts and precinct boundaries. Um, so stay tuned to your one weekly and look for those maps tomorrow. Thank you.
Because we don't have enough going on. Let's redistrict as well. Perfect. Counsel, anything to add tonight?
I just wanted to say congratulations to our friends at Nine Mile Brewing. They obviously opened over the weekend to enormous success. I think I saw most of you there, either in person or on social media, and, uh, just wanted to congratulate, uh, everybody at Nine Mile. Well done. Uh, best of luck to you, best of success to you. Great addition to the community. Thank you so very much for, uh, the time and effort that you put into it. I know it was huge and looking forward to, to seeing you there quite often in the future. Thank you much. Anything else, counsel?
Councilmember Martin, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Sable for getting us done early tonight. So might have to talk to Jamie about that.
Well done, Mike. Thank you. Counsel, with nothing else to talk about tonight, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Coulter?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. Hearing no further, counsel discussion. Mr. Brillert? Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Delisandro?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you much for all tuning in and for your participation, counsel and staff, for all your work. Everybody have a good evening. You've got about an hour and a half left of Valentine's Day, so enjoy. Thanks much.
Night, folks.